Okay, six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. All board members and student reps are present tonight. Nice to see. So we're gonna start right off with a long night ahead of us, so we'll start right off with the communication items.
And just a really important communication item, just wanted to call. We did have to move our Tuesday, February 27th board meeting to Monday, February 26th, that's six o'clock. Still here in the boardroom, but there are precinct caucuses on that Tuesday. So if you would like to participate in that, there will be a group of, I don't know if it's Republicans or Democrats, that are assigned to this space in this showroom. So throughout the building though, it's our building is being used for the caucuses. So if you'd come on up, if you'd like to be part of the process. With that, I'm going to invite our elementary school principal and we'll hear what's happening at the elementary school. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. In addition to what is up there, I have two other items I'd like to share out. I'll first start off with stating today, we had our first grade music program here in the auditorium, where families and friends came to watch the first graders take the stage for the first time. And they did a program to "Love from the Crayons." So it was related to colors and they had different soft, to the various colors. This strand did another wonderful job, first grade teachers and the tech department just really making that happen. And it was so much fun seeing them on stage today. February is a big month at the elementary, it's I Love to Read Month. In addition to that, we celebrated our 100th day of school on Monday. So there was a lot of energy and special activities throughout the school this week. But with I Love to Read Month, we have a lot of different school-wide activities that include stop, drop and read, mystery readers, reading with our family groups, and the focus is on story elements in the setting. And so we'll have some fourth and fifth graders leave that discussion as they're reading different books and where is the story taking them as they're reading. We have a great sponsorship and partnership with the Great River Regional Library. They reached out to us and wanted to bring in an author, Margie Prius, for a school-wide assembly and presentation. And so we connected with them and was able to get that on the calendar for early April. So we look forward to that opportunity as well. We have our first pop packs going out to those that signed up this Friday, so that families and students have some extra food items over the extended Presidents' Day weekend. And then we also have three more days in March. February 6th, we had a two-hour late start and sometimes we get asked, what do we do on late starts? And so I wanted to take this opportunity to paint the picture and provide you an understanding of what all happened that day in those two short hours. Starting off with our elementary staff, we did an overview of the Minnesota Read Act. As you've heard, that is new legislation that has come out related to reading. And so time with staff, understanding what is it and how it impacts our work at the elementary school. So we had a great learning and conversation about that. And we were able to start identifying what are some tweaks and changes that we can make in order to meet the requirements of the Minnesota Read Act. In addition to that, we reviewed and analyzed winter fast bridge reading data. As you know, we benchmark fall, winter and spring. And so we were able to look at that winter data and make some adjustments to our student programming, specifically to power half hour and how can we meet the needs of our students now that it's winter benchmarking time. So it was a great morning of learning together. Our career professionals were also part of our two-hour late start and they participated in training related to behavior strategies and building positive effective student relationships. And so we had the pleasure of having our central ed, BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst Liz, and our very own Paintsville Elementary Social Worker Tori Shade and Special Education Teacher Amanda Rugemer. They were our presenters that day. So we had some great in-house opportunity for all of our career professionals who learn from one another and learn from some experts in that area of behavior strategies. So looking at kindergarten registration, we have our registration night Thursday, March 14th. And similar to last year, we invited families with last name A through L, 6 to 6:30 in the Paintsville Elementary Cafeteria, and then M through Z, 6:45 to 7:15. We were able to welcome families, kind of do a question and answer, give building tour and provide some overview of what kindergarten looks like as we have families ready to send their child to our kindergarten next fall. Registration packets will be sent to families and available for pickup in our office after February 20th. That's right around the corner. And then I also wanted to recognize students who have been mindful, connected and respectful throughout the month of January with our Bulldog Spotlight. Hopefully you've been seeing them in the paper as well. It seems to be a local highlight for many families and certainly our students. So I want to recognize Gracie Walters, Zaden Lynn Behrens, Kinsley Labs, Colin Bonnemaugh, Peyton Gurkin, Kylie Groshens, Kylie Fox, Aria Pearson, Griffin Reek, Paxton Schrantz, Kenley Hamish, Baymax Arnold, Mallory Stolberger, Alexander Larre, Wishy Weiss, Addison Holzer, Brooklyn Garland, Dylan Bierman and Jordy Frank for being Bulldog Spotlight recipients for January. Looking ahead, we've got preschool screening February 16th, this Friday, and then of course no school on Monday for Presidents' Day. Just added those two visuals there at the end for the view.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment about the 100 Days of School, Cassie. I just received a text, my oldest daughter's youngest daughter, that kind of sounds strange. They live in Arctic Park, but she's in the first grade and it was their 100th day of school. So what they did was an aging photo. So I saw my granddaughter, what she looked like, she was 100 years old, so.
A lot of fun things out there with the aging app. That's fun, but they do a lot of fun activity around 100 and celebrating.
All right. Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. And we'll invite Mr. Orline, come on up and we'll, secondary school, let's see what's happening there.
All right, well, good evening. Just, I want to start out with a shout out to Anita Flanders and Lauren Ielkes for organizing our middle school mid-winter activity day. It's a pretty big undertaking. We've got, we had buses going to Powder Ridge and the skating place. And then the other option was bowling and a movie in the theater. They, it was 50 degrees at, when they went to Powder Ridge, but they, everyone seemed to have fun. So thank you to those, those two for organizing it. And then they also had a middle school dance on, on that Friday too. So it was a busy week for them. We're, we are in the middle of Sweet Fest and we have some activities going on, dress up days, and we have coronation on Wednesday tomorrow at 2:20. Kelly Weyler and Jackie Campbell do a great job of getting all that organized, so appreciate that. Just an update on, I haven't spoken to you since the beginning of the year and with our, our new middle school telephone policy, it's been going really well. We've, kids have been great. The number of kids that are out of their seats at lunch and in the gym, running around and, and socializing with each other has increased dramatically. And so has our, our discipline when it comes to things that go on with the phone during the day. So we're really happy with that. We also, second semester implemented a hall pass system that is through our Chromebooks. And it's a, it's a system that a number of schools are starting to use in our area and across the state and country. It has cut down on the traffic during class immensely. And it used to be, I called it the two-person phenomena. It always seemed like there were two or three kids together in the hallway going somewhere in the middle of class. And, and, and with our new system, it's, it's really eliminated a lot of that. And we're able to kind of monitor where, where kids are. And, and it helps if we're ever in an emergency situation, we know where they are and what they're, what they're doing on their past, we're using it for appointments. And so it's, it's been, it's been good for our teachers. Last Thursday, we, I had Jerry Sparby and Jim Meyer come to school and work with our eighth graders. I don't have it on this sheet, I just, just added that. But they have a program called Huddle Up and it's kind of a combination of teamwork and mental health and just a whole bunch of different games to get kids working together and teach lessons. And, and so it was kind of a short notice thing. Jerry Sparby is a retired teacher and principal from Cold Spring. And Jim Meyer is a retired teacher from Cold Spring. And they've, they've kind of helped develop this program that is really going nationwide. And it's, it's really incredible. So they came and worked with eighth graders for about 40 minutes last Thursday and kids just had a great time with it. So we're, we're working on getting the seventh, sixth and seventh grade scheduled during advisory coming up. We do have a new instructor in our CNA for our CNA class, I just wanted to give you an update on that. It's been going really, really well. We've got 18 students in there this semester. We've adjusted the times a little bit. In the past, they had been getting done earlier than, than we expected. And so there was a lot of kind of free time and one, you know, and with students that got done with that class. And so with this new instructor, they've, they've adjusted it and they've kind of increased the rigor of it. And so we have 18 students, we have four students from Eden Valley that come over for that program. Sometimes we have students from A to C, but it just didn't work out for them.
The people out there listening in, CNA stands for?
Certified Nursing Assistant. Let's see, milk machines. So in March, we will be transitioning from, from cartons of milk to milk machines at the secondary level. You may not know this, but there's actually a cardboard shortage. And I was told it hasn't quite hit Minnesota yet. But been working with the Midwest Area Association out of St. Paul and they have a program where they donate the machines to the schools. So we have two machines, about $8,000 worth of machine. And all, and they donate 790 glasses with the, with the carts and everything to wash them. And, and so I went over to Eden Valley one day for lunch. I went over to BBE for lunch to kind of see what they've done with that. Some other schools have taken advantage of the program too. So we're gonna get that going probably the second week of March. And our plan is to have kind of a, a little celebration. We'll have some, we'll reach out to some dairy farmers in the area and have them come in and, and help serve cookies and milk to our middle school kids to practice. And then have them there for lunch to just kind of help kids out and get them used to it. So looking forward to that. Any questions for me?
I got a question on the, on the milk, milk thing. I guess I heard that there's some grants available through local cremaries. I don't know if that was looked into at all.
Well, but we didn't even have to write a grant for the machines. Those were, those were donated, but we, we're under contract with a, with a milk carrier. Yep, until.
June 30th.
Who are we contracted?
Camps.
Camps.
Yeah.
So we'll go up for bid, we have to go up for bid for milk for our bread and dairy. And then we'll go up in June.
I guess the only negative thing that I've heard was the washing of the glasses, but I think you can get trays that'll fit in the.
They have those, they donate those trays also.
Any thought of, if that goes well, to do that at the elementary school too?
We've, we've talked about it, you know, I think that, that, that has its own issues, you know, with, with young kids. But there are, there are elementaries that are doing it within our, within our central Minnesota area.
And I guess I understand there's a, you know, a fee for so many ounces, but I just, I guess the little, and I'm not going to come across as an expert on it, but I visited with some people that, I don't want to say waste milk, but we can afford to give a little extra out to the kids for what the cost is involved. So I think that's great. I guess my only thing is, is I wish we had done that sooner. And I know about the cardboard shortage, but I sure like to see us do it at the elementary level too.
Well, we're gonna try to, we'll use this as a pilot to get it going and see how it works for us.
Appreciate you doing that.
There's not much to say as when I was a kid, except for that. We all grew up with that, everybody did.
Well, when I was, when I was a kid, I grew up in Richmond. And so we would, we would take a bus to Cold Spring for a little eat or we would, or we would bike from Richmond back in those days. And I loved going to the State Bank of Cold Spring in June because they had, we drank so much milk. It was, yeah, so it was really good memories of that.
We have the cartons where you can stick your fork in the bottom of it and they'll throw it across the room.
Somebody said what's drinking out of glass too. It's kind of like wine, wine may have made it to be drank out of a, out of a box. I better change the subject.
Any questions?
Any, any update on eighth grade, the block scheduling, how that's going?
Yep, we're, we're in the process, I'll have an update at the next.
Okay, very good. Thanks Dave, I appreciate that.
It's going really well, we've got some, we've got some good ideas and.
Okay, good.
On that, so.
Thank you, thank you, stay on top of it, Dave.
All right, activities. Mr. Henderson, come up and let us know what's been happening in our activities room.
It's been a while for me to be in here too. I played a game last time, but. We're currently in the middle of sections for some winter activities and about to enter sections for others. Our girls hockey team, the River Lake Stars, compete for the section championship on Thursday. At the state of the office college. So even though we're playing Wilmer, which is a half hour away, we have to travel two hours to go watch or to go compete and find anywhere closer around here. So I plan on going to watch that on Thursday. Wrestling travels to Minnetoka also on Thursday for the first round of sections. And gymnastics competes on Saturday in Morris. Dance and one act play concluded their seasons the past couple of Saturdays. See, for the respective competitions. And then boys and girls basketball, boys hockey are nearing the end of our regular seasons. And we'll be gearing up for playoffs very soon, kind of towards the end of February, beginning of March. So it's an exciting time of year for all the participants and their families and all the time that they've invested throughout the whole, all their, you know, little kid years all the way up. So it's, it's a, it's a fun, fun and exciting time. With different sections, come a lot of different procedures. I know we've talked about this past couple of years with the need to buy tickets. Either they need to be purchased online ahead of time or you can buy them in line with cash or card. Some live streaming services can be provided and sometimes they can't, depending on the facilities and what the host wants to do. So just check with our online activities calendar and with our different social media platforms that we send things out on there too. We try to get out information on there as much as we can. I guess I'd like to wrap up with, it's been a busy winter season again. The field house has been a tremendous asset for providing opportunities for just our high school teams, but all of our youth teams to be able to practice and play games and host tournaments in there. And I think right when, right when we started January, right Chris, we had basketball tournament on that first Saturday. And then the next Saturday, we had Friday and Saturday wrestling tournaments all the way through. And there wasn't a parking spot to be found, I don't think either weekend. So it's awesome when we get all those families and all those kids into there. But we hosted 25, I think, I counted 25 varsity events this winter, or at least dates, 25 varsity dates. Many of them being double headers or even a triple header. We had a boys and girls basketball one night and gymnastics. So we have thankfully the facilities and the space and people who are willing to officiate those games. And takes a lot of flexibility with all of our ticket takers being here early for those double headers or all of a sudden we have a change and somebody can't make it, somebody being able to step in. This past Friday, I couldn't find our fourth wrestling table worker until about an hour and a half before we started. I swung and missed on about 20 people. But definitely appreciate all the people who help make those things possible. Announcers, officials, custodians, concessions, workers, supervisors, ticket table, ticket takers. Anybody else I've missed, I apologize. But definitely takes a lot of people who care about our, our kids to be able to provide those opportunities. So I guess if you have any questions, you want to fire away?
Just so we could use about two more gyms if we want to start.
I really appreciate you making sure we have links to the live streams. Being seniors, we quite often don't go to all of the games, especially when there's influence.
Sometimes those aren't always get provided. So I just usually do a little Google search and try to, like if it's, you know, ACGC, just type in ACGC activities calendar and I usually try to find it on there. If I can't find whatever, if they don't provide it to me or if I don't hear anything, I usually have to do a little, a little searching, but.
It's appreciated. And we, we follow many sports, we don't have, get in the game many times, we just sit by watching the kids.
Yeah.
So it's really appreciated, thank you. Anything else for Rick? All right, Rick, thank you.
I'm not being supervised tonight, so.
Absolutely, yep. All right, community education. Come on up and let us know what's happening throughout community. I'm just not here, there we go. Right. So we just wrapped up our winter classes and are looking at, we have our spring catalog at the printer. So those will be coming out real soon. As you know, we've been working with, or we have our, our registration program, ELEO. So some of these links are some of the reports that we can get from that space. I don't have access to that one. Oh shoot, okay. All right, well, I will open those up so you can look at them. But we have a number of different reports that are at our advisory council meeting. And so these reports are very valuable. And we just talked about how that we can do program planning with the data that comes from those reports. So I will make sure that we get those opened up and then you can see them on your own. Spring catalogs coming out, we're featuring, you know, our usual spring recreation, enrichment and special events. But we also have some sneak peek into summer. One new program or one that's come back into Paintsville is I connected with Great Theater and they're bringing a play in a week into town. So we'll have that available for grades three through 10 this summer. So hopefully we'll get some people to register and have, have that great opportunity. We have our core robotics classes, we have two sessions again. One is a drones class, so they can take just the class or they could pay a little bit more and keep the drone. So we're hoping that that, that we filled those, both of those classes last year and I think, I anticipate that we will again. And also any of our summer ball and soccer and those programs are, are featured ahead of the registration time. Pause program, we're planning for summer, we're using a camp style theme. Just a few changes in how that's delivered. We're going to be, I have, I have some staff that I would like to be more dedicated specialists on, on those topic areas. So they will focus on planning like our art area, the enrichment area and the motor or games recreational pieces. And then kids will rotate around to those stations and provide a little more structure to, to our summer care and give that a camp feeling that they'll have for, throughout the week. So we have themes that are planned throughout the summer. And then those reports that you can't get into, I will, those are, just, they just talk about what average daily or yeah, average daily usage. So that's how I took a look at how many, how much staff will I need? How much, you know, how much revenue will need to be to cover staff? And so those were pieces of data that I used to plan for summer. Preschool, 2024-25, we are, our registration opens March 18th. We knew this year is we are going to, along, on the same night as kindergarten is doing their registration night, we're gonna do a preschool information night. So our three-year-olds will come in, you know, 6 to 6:30, if families with three-year-olds and families with four-year-olds and come in at 6:45 to 7:15. So they will get a chance to ask questions about our program, find out about scholarships, find out about wraparound care, look at the classrooms, meet staff. So if they're shopping for something for their child in the preschool area, they can come and check it out and that will be on the 14th. And then again, then everything opens for registration on the 18th. Fitness center. We talked about today at our advisory council, just one of the goals that we have is to maintain or grow membership. So some of the ways that we're trying to do that is to improve customer and member services. Provide, main, provide a well-maintained fitness area and up-to-date equipment. So we do have a few pieces of equipment that will be coming in in the next few weeks that we will be upgrading some old pieces of equipment, having them removed and have some new pieces moved in. And then increasing opportunities for members through group fitness. We have a new kettlebell class that is going to be offered in, in February. We're looking at creating some events that members and non-members can attend. And then we are offering, we're gonna launch it probably before the summer is just a, a middle school or just a gym membership. So for grades six through 12, this would be for kids that, you know, they can be in the gym without a parent. So this would be an opportunity to have a membership for just, you know, shooting baskets, playing volleyball, that kind of stuff, especially in the summer when it's 100 degrees out and we have air-conditioned gyms. So it's not for people to, you know, have, still have fun and not, you know, be so super sweaty. And then we have some individual training opportunities. We had a local fitness trainer approach us and she is now doing some of her individual training with clients in our center. And it's a good partnership, she brings them in for. She, it, our hope is that when the clients come in, that if they aren't a member, maybe they'll want to join our, join the club and continue their membership. So we have early childhood screening on the 16th, as Cassie had mentioned earlier. We are putting the finishing touches on our concert series. We are gonna have two extra weeks this time. We've got most of our bands lined up and we're just working on sponsors and finishing that up. And then believe it or not, I have another catalog coming out in April. So we are getting ready to geared up for summer. And then just continue, early childhood playground, working on, working on some funding opportunities, applying for some grants, so we can get the ball rolling on that project. We've had some good meetings and met with some people that could help us with that program. And so we are gonna move forward and I'll start by writing a grant and that's getting going from there. That's it. Anything else for Chris? All right, sounds good, thank you.
I guess I have a question. What, your link there, I guess I didn't see that. I don't think I had access to that, that link, that statistics for the membership.
This will be, this will be linked in to our updated minutes. And then you'll be able to see it. But it, it, though, when you look at it, it is the current membership as of today. So you'll see.
Just, I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to a number, but I mean. We have 250, or how many members?
I can tell you that. I can tell you that.
I was just curious, I mean.
Active membership on that program means, you know, they paid and whether they're coming to the gym or not is. So as of today, we have one thousand forty-six active members.
Wow.
Yep.
Trust me, they don't.
No, no, yeah. They're not all coming at the same time, thankfully, but you know, it's.
I just wanted a ballpark figure. That's more than I anticipated. That's incredible.
That is according to our programming, so I'm hoping that's accurate, so.
That's pretty.
That has really changed over here. That's been great, because when we first started, you, there were specific hours, and now you can come in at ten o'clock at night, there's nobody here, which is great.
Right.
You can come in at one in the morning if you want.
Yeah.
That's just kind of huge. For a population of, what are we at, twenty-two, twenty-three hundred? I think that's pretty impressive. Very impressive.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
While Ken's coming up, we'll just quick give you a technology update. So this is where we were typically scheduled to have our survey shared out with our community. But we are, we extended the timeline. We found that we had some addresses that were missed, and so we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to engage our entire community with the survey. And so that survey summary and results has been pushed back to the next board meeting. So just wanted to let you know why that's not being discussed today, because we extended the timeline a little bit. So if anybody did not get to submit their survey, they are certainly able to do so still. Again, one, one per person, and if you need a code, you could still contact the district office and we'll get that for you if you did not get a survey. So just wanted to let everybody know why that wasn't presented today. And with that, we'll turn it over to Ken. What do you got?
So late January, I was able to attend a Massmouth meeting that was based on new legislatures going on and what, how it affects schools and stuff. And it was a very good meeting, learned a lot. I do also got to talk to a lot of other people that I realize other schools are going through the same things we go through. Yeah, it's very interesting. Great meeting. So I've been working on the softball complexes. I kind of pushed that up a little bit here again and tried to get that moving, you know, if you don't stay on and it falls asleep. Got some really good ideas here coming from some people, and hopefully we can keep that moving. I'm looking forward to getting that into our facilities committee meetings and so on, see if we could move that forward and give that a really nice uplift over there. So this last month, we had a roof leak at the elementary school, which that roof is supposed to be good, so I did have a threw out to look at that, and there's a drain up there that's leaking and it's got to get re-colored and so on. So I've got to get that scheduled. I haven't heard back from them as of yet, but so that's a little sucky. Also, in the elementary school, we had a broken water line that's been leaking for quite some time. It was the water line that was taken out for when there was drinking cones in each classroom. And one of them, the cap where they had kept the water line was leaking and it's been leaking a while. Working on getting that cleaned up. Very musty smell in there for a while after we got it and a lot of wood was wet and sticky and something got out poor old. Taken care of and hopefully we can get the class back in there Wednesday. So, yeah. Also, related to plumbing, is in this school, in the middle school, I've got a urinal that's not flushing, hasn't been flushing in a while. I've had to jetter down it a few times, and now we're starting to get sand up it. So I'm thinking the pipe is broken underneath somewhere. So that's going to end up on our summer project because that the cleanup, I'm hoping, is behind the lockers. That's the only one we can find. So we're hoping to get that, so. And the first results for lead and water came back for this building. We finally got the jugs for the elementary school. I was pleasantly surprised on how well it was. We did not pass on all of them. We got some stinks that as of right now, we do have signs on them that they're not supposed to use it for potable water and so on and so forth. I think with just a little bit of, you know, sometimes it's just the screens and the ends, if we can get them cleaned up and we are and have them retested, that we might be in pretty good shape here, so.
And Ken, just as a, that, that came from new legislation changes?
Yes, that came in that we got that, I got a grant for that testing this time, and I talked to resource, and they said we can just use that, because this is the year that we're up to do it. And he says, if you got that grant, we can just use that to folks, not any exact additional costs or anything for that. Any questions?
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is our board self-evaluation. So you'll see that this does have a three-hour timeframe, and what we are going to do is I'm going to end the Google meet, and then I'm going to zoom in, Gail Gilman from the Minnesota School Board Association, and then she will facilitate the self-evaluation with the board. It is going to be recorded and we'll upload that as well, but for the gallery members, you certainly can save if you'd like to. So I'm going to end the recording and then we'll, we'll link in the next one shortly. Welcome to Paintsville Schools. Thank you for being here. And with that, I don't know, Gail, I'll just turn it over to you and I'll let you facilitate this process for us and we'll take your lead.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. I love the nameplates that you have. That is going to go down, they're going to go down in history as my all-time favorite and the most creative. I've never seen a school have something quite as creative. So is it, is that because of somebody here in the group that created those or?
Our students.
Oh my, oh my. You need to showcase that.
Talking about forty years ago, roughly.
Three years.
Out of our innovation center. Yep. Each one's generally made some way different, whether it's a decal or a plastic or machined out and
Yep.
They're all uniquely different.
Very, very neat.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two.
There you go.
Twenty twenty-two.
Oh, I love that. Well, I am so excited to be here this evening. Your superintendent and I have been working on this for a while to get everything coordinated and be ready for us to review your board self-evaluation this evening. My name is Gail Gilman, and I serve as Director of Strategic Planning and Board Leadership with Minnesota School Boards Association. And we certainly appreciate your membership in the association, and it's always a pleasure to serve all of you all the time. And this evening, we're going to focus on one item, and that will be the board self-evaluation. Before we do that, I wanted to do a little bit of introductions, a few, just a couple nuggets about me. I joined Minnesota School Boards Association in two thousand seventeen, and at that point in time, I worked primarily with board development and then segued to the strategic planning and board leadership piece. I am a former school board member. I served on the New Ulm Board of Education for two terms. And during those years, I served as vice chair, as clerk, and then also represented our board on the Riverbend Education District. So it is probably one of the key reasons why I was interested in joining MSBA and just a fun opportunity for me to provide you with as much assistance as possible in the role that you serve. So tell me who you are. I'm going to take a few notes here. We'll just go around the table. First name, and then how many years you've been on the board, and if you're serving in, if you're serving as an officer. So name, how many years on the board, if you're serving as an officer, and then if you're anything like me, and you probably are, I wore a lot of different hats besides being a school board member. So what things are you involved in when you're not serving on the school board? So with that, do we have a volunteer to start first?
My name is, my name is Ron Spanier. This is my second year on the school board. Lived in the area all my life.
Very good. And anything else you want to share when you're not on, on the school board?
Farming, and my wife works at school, and I work for a crop insurance company.
Okay.
Four kids, four kids through the district.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm a farm girl. That's how I was raised in a little town called Lake Crystal. My family is, still has the farm where let's see, a third-generation farm family. So I have a lot of agriculture roots, for sure. So nice to meet you, Ron. So should we just go around, go around the table?
Thomas Pearson, this is my sixth year on the board. And I work for central care here locally, as well as I have two kids in the district and we volunteering for sporting events, coaching, we're always active and they have been for the most seventeen years we've lived in town now. I've always been active in the district and the community, but now that I have kids, it just multiplied.
Very good. Thanks, Thomas. Good to meet you.
Gerald Horfit, I started my second year on the school board. Retired Air Force. On, on some other boards, the Community Service Center, which is our food shelf on that board. Legion member of the first flights over the Legion. And I did fail to mention, I am the clerk for this board here.
Okay.
And I work, worked at a funeral home and teach religion at the school. And I'm on a committee for our community giving foundation here in Paintsville on the grants and the community.
Okay, thanks. Good to see you again, Gerald.
Yeah, great seeing you.
Yeah.
All right, do I, okay.
Go ahead, Janelle.
Great. So I'm Janelle. This is my third year as superintendent for the Paintville area schools. Some other things, I guess, besides school and this is, I have one, I have two kids. One of them graduated college in December and the other one graduates in May, so lots of big life changes, but it's super exciting and pretty proud of those kiddos, so that's, that's fun for me.
Great. Thanks, Janelle.
Yeah. Rachel, I'm going into my second year on the board, currently a vice chair. I'm a legal administrative assistant at a parent legal at a law firm in St. Cloud. Full-time mom of three kids. All of them. You got time for it?
Great. Thank you, Rachel.
I'm Cheryl Valzcamp. I'm presently treasurer in my twelfth year, my third term. Our three kids went through this school system, graduated, and nine of our twelve grandchildren and two of our great-grandchildren are still in school here. I'm also secretary for the Stearns County Sheriff's Monarch Reserves, the Need Plan Search and Rescue Team, been with them for thirty, thirty-two years. I guess that's about it. I'm retired. Time at all.
I'm guessing even if you're retired, you probably don't have a lot of time with such a legacy with, with children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So good. Thank you.
I'm Rick Kane. I'm the chair of the board this year. This is my eighth year. Retired eight years ago. I was a pastor here in town for twenty-two years. Five of my kids went through the school system here, or at least graduated from here. Still working at a church part-time and another funeral home, a competition. Money will work for both. Really involved with the soccer association here in town, and I guess that's about it for now.
Great. Thank you, Rick.
I'm Bruce Vanderpoel. I've been on the school board in my twelfth year. And I'm an insurance agent for occupation.
Very good. And I remember meeting a few of you when I was in Paintsville a few years back as well. So good to see familiar faces again and greetings to new folks as well. With that, a few things here, as we work together this evening, a few community agreements, so to speak, kind of just setting the stage, setting the tone for the discussion. So remember that the competence will be in the group, what you put into it is what you'll get out of it, and you're off to a great start because you all were able to complete the school board self-evaluation. So we have that in the database and we have that all summarized to review with you this evening. Second is to trust your fellow board members, that they'll be honest and open and respectful discussion. And a third one is to listen for understanding and feel free to ask some questions as well, and that's the next one, to be curious. So listening and then being curious and feeling comfortable in answering questions. When I was on the school board in New Ulm, had a fellow board member who was much more seasoned than I was. He was a great mentor to me. And many, many times, he reminded all of us that there was a reason why we had two ears and only one mouth. And so I always think about, his name was Don Potter, an implement dealer in New Ulm, John Deere. And so I always think about that when I'm meeting with school boards and when I talk about listening and remaining curious. Also, as the last one, just recognize your commitment. Being on the school board was not easy when I was on the board. I think it's even more challenging now in the things that you have been confronted with that I would have never dreamed would have impacted school districts. So just recognize your commitment, be proud of the work that you're doing as a team, and know that you are valued and appreciated. Sometimes it doesn't always feel that way. But for you as a board superintendent team, definitely recognize your commitment. So we appreciate that. Any questions about those community agreements? Okay, I am going to do a screen share and we'll see if I find where I need to be here. And then, Janelle, if you can remind me too, do the, do board members have copies of these in front of them or on board book?
They have, they have copies in front of them, yes.
Okay, sounds good. So do you want me to, so as a group, would you like me to share everything? Or would you like me just to reference them? Because I can do either one. Do you have a preference?
It seems like I'd like to see you kind of go through the summary of exactly what we were presented based upon the questionnaires that we answered and create that relationship between that and the report that you have given.
Yep, we will absolutely do that. And some of these first documents that I'm going to share will kind of move us towards that as we, as we frame our work. So.
Gail, I would say if you can leave it as like you are presenting, then if individuals come to watch the recording, they're able to see what you're referencing. That seems to work a little bit better.
Good advice. Perfect. And I had no druthers either way, just wanted to check to see what you were most comfortable with. So the first document that I wanted to visit with you about is the five stages of board development. You can see them up on the screen. I'm going to start with forming, forming, storming, norming, performing, and deforming, or transforming, or reforming. You kind of look at it that way. I'm going to describe to you briefly what those stages are, and then I'm going to ask you to think about where you believe you as a board superintendent team are at. So forming is that time of orientation. It's when you first come together, when you regroup with new board member or new superintendent. You have, you have somebody new on your team, and that's the time of forming. And when you're in that stage, many times there's high expectations, but there's also high anxiety as well. Many times, a lot of questions are being asked by new board members. Sometimes there's a lot of dependence on leadership, both from the board members and from the superintendent, because there's just a lot of things that we as new board members don't know. And so it's one of those times that you're building trust. It's a time that you need to move slow in order to go fast. You got to just take that time. Sometimes it doesn't always work that way, because if any of you happen to join the board in the middle of the pandemic, there was not too much time to go slow. But if you can, trying to go slow so that you can go fast. The next stage is storming. And as you can see up on the screen, it talks about that dissatisfaction or kind of a chaotic time. kind of a chaotic time, anxiety is still high. Um, sometimes for new board members, the reality of the work and the responsibility has set in. And then you're wondering, what did I get myself into? Sometimes it can be polarizing. It might be an us versus them. You might have new board members that come, come, uh, join the team. And, um, they come in and just as I did, all of us, I think sometimes with some, um, expectations or maybe even an agenda. And so that we versus them might be, um, the current board members and then just kind of finding how that's going to mesh. Um, sometimes there can be disagreements and this is probably a time where you always want to revisit your code of ethics. And remember that conflict is okay. Um, if we didn't have a little bit of conflict in a positive sort of way where we can be, uh, having productive conversations, it probably means we aren't doing the work that we're supposed to be doing. Then the next phase is norming. That's when you start to move towards, uh, some resolution in the work that you're doing. Any discrepancies or misunderstandings start to kind of just dissolve away. This is also the time that you start moving from me as an individual board member to we as a collective group. And, um, usually during this time, you feel like everybody is contributing and feeling pretty comfortable in the work that you're doing. The next phase is performing and this is that high level that you get to. This would be your goal for all boards to become at the performing level where the productivity is high. Uh, it's really, it becomes a craft that you are, are working at. Sometimes you are, are, you know, so cohesive that things just really click along. Meetings might be shorter. The one thing that you'll want to remember is that in this stage, you don't want to move too fast. Um, maybe not so much for you, but you don't want to move too fast for your community and any of the stakeholders, any of your partners in public education who are working with you because they might think that you have become a rubber stamp and are not taking the time to have the discussion. So during this phase, um, when you know that you really are at that high performing stage, always be real intentional about explaining at your board meetings whether someone is in attendance or not, because obviously you are, um, live or you're taping your meetings and, um, putting them out there for the community to watch. And, um, that way they know that there has been a process and that you didn't just show up tonight and made this decision without any discussion. The, uh, last stage of board development is that reforming, transforming, deforming. And that means that there's some change, uh, with the board superintendent team. It's a time that you are going to recognize the value that a departing member has brought to the board. And then it's that time of saying, okay, we're going to start all over again and we're gonna, we're going to be in that forming stage. So with that bit of this, uh, description, where do you see yourselves right now, forming, storming, norming, performing, deforming or reforming?
I feel like we're like norming, performing, kind of.
Yes, I would say norming for sure.
Yeah.
Possibly performing.
Exactly. Say we're balancing in.
Yeah, right in.
In there. I can't see that we're consistently at that high level performing, you know, but we're, I feel like when we got three new board members last year, we had that forming period, but we kind of transformed from there into this norming, performing. But across the end of last year and the beginning of this year.
Okay, very good. Does anybody feel differently? Anybody, um, want to share something other than kind of that balance in between norming and performing?
Chair, the definition of performing, I think we pushed that pretty close, but our meetings are not short. We have lots of discussion here. It's full open, wide open discussion, uh, in front of the public. So that would be our differences. Um, uh, if a performing group is truly defined as somebody that's moving really fast, we are not there, but together I believe we perform very nicely.
Great. That's a wonderful insight related to performing too. I appreciate that. And I'm going to guess that your partners in public education are very grateful for the conversations, the discussion that you have at the board table. Very good.
Hey Gail, would you say that if, if we were at a performing stage and doing well at that, and then there was a transformation, a new superintendent came in or new board members?
Board member.
Do you move quick, much more faster through the forming, storming, norming, you think? Or is it like going back to the beginning and starting all over again?
That is a super question. I think it depends. I think it depends upon who the new members of the team are. Um, sometimes you have new members that have maybe, um, while the, while the remainder of the group of the team is at that performing, uh, stage. Sometimes you have new board members that, or new team members that will join, who have maybe been attending board meetings or watching board meetings for quite a while. And they can really just hit the ground running. Sometimes board members might come in with an agenda in mind. And that might slow things up just a little bit. Or, you know, for all we know, it could, um, move you right back to that performing stage. So I think it really depends. I think a big piece of that though, is how you orientate any of the new team members so that they feel really comfortable. You, you get them up to speed right away so that you can continue on. That's a good question.
I want to try to point out is if you get to that performing stage or doing it well,
Yep.
I think you can continue quickly moving through the other stages. Rather than thinking of this as, well, now we stopped performing, we go back and then we start all over again.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I would agree with that. Another thing that, um, some school, schools have identified is, uh, they might say, well, most of the time we're performing, but yeah, sometimes we, we feel like we're storming about a topic. And that's okay. There might be something, um, on the horizon that comes to you and maybe you do feel like you're not in agreement. Maybe you do feel like there's some dissatisfaction. And so if you do find yourself moving backwards to storming or norming, know that that is perfectly fine and know that that is normal. You wouldn't be the first and you won't be the last to have done that. And so the, the key is just to work through it and then use those great skills that you've developed to move back into that performing stage. Okay. Any other comments about this before I move on to the next document?
Yeah, the last thing you just said, I think is more of a individual analysis rather than a board analysis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because in our discussions, we have a fair amount of disagreement. We have people in all different sectors, uh, our district. Um, but I don't believe as an individual, we roll back to storming with disagreement. It's part of performing. Right?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, the meetings would just fly and we'd only need one of us.
Right. No, I would agree with you. And I think, um, that you, it sounds to me like you have built up the relationship so that it would be pretty surprising to me if you did move backwards. However, not impossible. You never know. But I think for the most part, if you've accomplished that level of, of high performing, that's probably where you're going to land on, until maybe, uh, new team member joins the group. With that, I'm going to move on. If you do have other questions, we can always go back, but I'm going to move on just to talk briefly about the board governance model. And this is something that you see in phase one and you see it in phase three. And just to, um, use it as a reminder of how you operate in the upper left-hand corner, the school board governs, you set the expectations and the parameters. And then in the lower right-hand corner, the superintendent manages, provides the leadership and the supervision for the work that needs to be done. For, uh, us as board members, uh, we set the expectations and parameters, which you'll see under the word establish. And also a strategic plan. And Janelle sent your strategic plan to me earlier today. I'm actually going to be referencing that because the work that you're doing and the school board self-evaluation really hinge, really connect to your strategic plan. So we're going to talk about that too. But as a board having that strategic plan in place, and then based on your strategic plan, you're probably going to be adopting policies related to some of your goals, uh, setting budget related to that and also hiring staff. Once you are, you are, have those things accomplished, then again, your superintendent will take care of the development, the implementation and the monitoring. And the dotted line between the, uh, the center is called the friendly fence. That means that neither one of you operate in a vacuum. In fact, there's always conversations going back and forth. And then always keep sight of what's at the center, student achievement for all. That's what we as board members are all about. And a lot of times, you know, I've often thought should have it right on our forehead. So it's a reminder to us, but when people look at us, it's a reminder to them as well. So that's the board governance model. Any questions that you have about that or any comments? Okay. The next document that I shared with you is school district goal alignment. And as I said before, your strategic plan goals line really closely to this task with the standards of board leadership. And so as you think about that, your district goals or your, um, your school goals, which are in the red box, then should and do, I'm assuming tied to the superintendent's goals, to your goals as a board, to the staff goals, to the student goals, and also to your community goals as well. So once you have taken that time to identify what those goals are for the, the next three or four or five years, you really have that goal alignment. And that's something that creates for you a lot of transparency and, um, no surprises. And at the top of that document or that model is again, student achievement for all. So as we are talking now, as we start to transition to look at the self-evaluation, I'll give some examples of how that all ties into the standards of board leadership. But before I move to the next document, any questions or comments for me? Okay, then the standards of school board leadership. There are five of them. The first one is conduct and ethics, and that is how you, excuse me, as a board superintendent team work together, trust one another, communicate with one another, respect one another and make decisions together. The second standard is vision and vision is just that, is it's that vision that you have for your school district over the, the, um, next three to five years. And it's that vision based on the goals of your strategic plan. The third standard is structure. And with structure, we, uh, are talking about the physical structures, which are your buildings and grounds. And then the organizational structure, which is staff from superintendent to licensed staff to non-licensed staff. It is, um, the curriculum that you provide and the technology that you provide under structure. The fourth standard is accountability. And with accountability, it is really monitoring all conditions of the school district from staff performance to the finances, to the student achievement. And then the fifth standard is advocacy and communication. And this is how you tell your story about all the great things that are happening within your school district, making sure that there is both the internal and the external communication in place. And as you look at each of these standards up on the screen, you'll see benchmarks underneath of A through D, A through E, A through F, A through H. And, uh, let's see. Lost mine. And the benchmarks that you see on here were the statements that you responded to on the board self-evaluation. So that's why I wanted to make sure that you saw these ahead of time. Because now as, um, we move into looking at the, the summary, you'll see these same benchmarks. And then you're, you're going to have an idea of where you assessed yourselves individually, but also as a group, based on each of those benchmarks. Any questions about the standards? The other tool, um, I'll just reference this later, but it's the superintendent evaluation and there is a segment under structure where we'll talk about that, but it's there as a resource for you. So then, uh, I will transition us to talk about your board self-evaluation and, uh, a couple of things you should know upfront. And for those of you that, um, were in attendance when I met with you in 2020, I probably said a couple of the, the same things. With this assessment, there is no right or wrong answer. It's your perception based on each of those benchmarks. There's no pass or fail. There's no right or wrong answer. So this is more about looking at the positives, looking at the things that are strong. And you're going to find in just a second that you have a lot of strengths within your board superintendent team. So it's really about looking at those strengths, patting yourself on the back because you deserve that, making sure you continue, um, at that high level. It's also an opportunity though, to take a look at, um, a few things that you might want to tweak, a few things you might want to talk about, few things you might want to address as, as a group. And so, um, with the board self-evaluation, it is longitudinal. And in 2020, this board superintendent team took the board self-evaluation and now again in 2024. And so as you see the results, you'll see the 2020 and also the 2024. If you choose to take this again at some point in time, then you'll get the additional years results and you'll be able to start monitoring some changes. And you'll, I actually think you'll see some fun changes, um, just from the few years that have passed by. So with that, uh, I'm going to scroll down. And we'll take a look first of all at considered page four, but the first four pages are not numbered. The document that you see in front of you right now is what I call the overview report. It's the aggregate data, but it's really an overview report. And this is something that I take a look at real closely every time I share one of these with a school to see what messages I'm picking up from it. And so as you look at this horizontal bar graph on the, down the left-hand side, you'll see the five standards. And at the top, you'll see the options when you took the evaluation. So your options were always most of the time, some of the time, never or don't know. And then underneath, um, that you'll see the 2020 and 2024 results. And you'll see the colorful responses here. So what we're looking for is responses of always and most of the time, where you're pretty much all in agreement, all cohesive about that. Those are things again that you'll want to say, hey, we're, we're doing a great job with that. Where there are responses of some of the time, you may want to have a discussion about how we can move some of the time to an always or most of the time. Are there some tweaks that need to happen? Maybe there's some information that the board needs to help that happen. Where you see responses in red, which reflect never, we're going to ask ourselves, is it never happening? Or could it be that you've got newer board members who haven't been on the board long enough to see that particular benchmark happen? But we're going to talk about primarily the things that are red, never. And then the don't knows, which are in black. And the don't knows are, uh, those things that again, we'll have a conversation. It might be if you don't know, it'll be a, an opportunity to inform. And it might become a topic at one of your work sessions where, um, that whatever that item is, um, you'll spend some time so that the entire board, the entire, um, group of board members and your student rep understand understand what those items are, where you responded, don't know. The, um, other thing that I do as I look at these is add up the always and the most of the time. And I have a, a very non-research-based, um, observation. Probably something that's pretty, makes a lot of sense too. What I have found is that for board superintendent teams, whose responses of always and most of the time are 50% or greater, there just seems to be a lot of cohesiveness. It seems to be a board that is really in sync. When I see those falling the other direction and there's more some of the time, never or don't know, there's probably some challenges or some concerns. And usually those are the groups that I'm meeting with and helping talk through some of those challenges. So as you look at this overview report, this year and in 2020, you pretty much exceeded that 50%. And certainly in 2024, you have exceeded the 50% in every category. Far exceeded that, by the way. So I think that is a, a good message for you. I think it's a good message for your community to know about as well. And then again, we'll look at the some of the times, the nevers and the don't knows. And I got a phone ring in here, we'll click that up. Any questions about this report?
Yeah, Gail, I do have this Gerald. So I'm looking at this as far as the dates. I don't know exactly when 2020 was done. Was that just as Janelle came on? Okay, so from the other one, okay, got you. All right, okay.
Janelle was not there at the time. And, um, it was, I'm, I'm pretty sure I was going to look that up for you, but I am 90% sure it was in this, in, uh, February of 2020. Yep.
All right.
Does that seem to make, is that sound, seem to be in sync too with superintendent transition and?
I would have been on the board the second year, my second year of board along with Jake and Ashley. And Matt had been here about that three years-ish maybe ahead of. Yeah, he was on the, he was on the board about a year before I started, so. So timeframe for you three being new and Janelle being about the same structure of years in her board.
So, so now, now knowing that that, and I mean, this just be looking and we haven't gotten into the questions and how things we look at there. I, I see, uh, as far as a board, at least, uh, working with the superintendent and, uh, maybe all of us, you know, as far as being something transparent, trying to keep things transparent. I see that, that, that appears that we're doing very well, especially when you look at the questions of never or, uh, don't know as far as those percentages. Just by observations, like I said, we really haven't gotten into the questions and seen how they're going, but all right, thank you.
Nope, that was, yep, perfect.
First obviously, it stuck out to me was that the don't, the don't knows, which is always a concern to me.
Yeah.
Either went way down or disappeared.
Yeah.
Which I thought was said something very positive.
Yep, I noticed the same thing too. So it seems as if everyone has been well-educated in their role and in each of those benchmark areas. One last comment from me before we move on. The responses here are reported in percentages. When we start moving into the individual statements, you'll notice then that it identifies the numbers um, of responses for each of those categories. The reason that this one is reported in percentages is because there are varying numbers of benchmarks. Remember when I shared that with you and I said it was A through D, A through E, A through H? And so in order to make this look like an apples and apples comparison, we've computed this in percentages so that you get a more clear picture of, um, how it compares then to the statements that are coming up shortly. So that's the one difference and that's the reason behind that. So anything else before I?
Yeah, just one, one last comment again, Gerald, one last comment again, uh, is the fact that especially when it comes to the, uh, don't knows.
Yes.
From a board perspective, as a member on the board, uh, the way that, and I don't know how the board had run before, but the way I think that Janelle has laid things out and the way our agenda is laid out, we have a lot of insight as to say, the secondary school and the elementary school because of the way that those principals come in and present, presents, uh, present their data along with the other, uh, staff members. So thank you, Janelle.
Good. Great. If there is anything that you want to go back to with that horizontal bar graph, we can always do that. Otherwise, we will, um, scroll through each of the standards, each of the, and each of the questions. And you're going to see me taking notes. The, uh, plan is that I will jot down some things that you discussed that might be helpful to continue the discussion on after this evening. And so I will do a summary and I'll also put together just a kind of a short recommendation of, oh, here's like one or two things that you might want to address in this next year. But that'll just be my suggestions. You'll be able to, you know, move forward with that as you see fit.
Gail, uh, Gail, can I pause for just a minute? I, I know you can't be on the side here, so I just wanted, Bruce was trying to interject something.
I'm just going to add one thing. So when I, just, just for me, when I looked at it and I looked at 20 to 2024, the first number of years I was on the school board, um, we had two regular meetings. One was an hour long, the next one was half an hour long. We didn't know anything. There was not any point in time we as members could talk because we can't talk offsite because of all the legalities. Well, when Matt got here, that's when, when we spoke about it, he set up that time for us to have this meeting we're in right now where we all discuss. And one of the things that happened is I, and what I was hoping would happen was we would understand where we're all at, yet our communication levels would rise. We weren't started very much in 2020. And a lot of things have been done, nothing against all the great things that have happened. But I think that has a lot to do with it because it's an easy communication area. It's great for the superintendent because she gets to see us all face to face altogether, kind of have an idea where we're at, where nothing's decided, we just get to talk. I think that's made a lot of difference here.
Very good. Wow. Great. Thanks for sharing that. And, um, I do apologize if I don't see you trying to get my attention. Because when I, when I'm screen sharing, then, um, I view you in a little bit smaller box. So don't be shy just to interrupt. That won't bother me at all. So.
It's kind of okay because it makes me look a little skinnier.
Oh my gosh, I thought you looked fine just the way you were, but anyway, oh my gosh. So, um, as we then look at each of the statements here, uh, the, the pattern that you'll see on every page is the number of the standards, standard one, the name, conduct and ethics. Then you'll see the benchmark. And in this case, it's conducting board and district business in a fair, respectful, and responsible manner. You'll always have the reminder of, you know, what the green stands for and the blue and the yellow and the red and the black. And then you'll have the benchmark statements. And these were the statements that you then responded to. And, uh, what I have done is to look through the report. I've made some notes that I want to make sure to comment on for you. But certainly this is about you, again, remaining curious and asking questions. And for these, uh, first couple of statements, there really isn't anything to comment on other than I wanted to say that with statement four, committing to a clear and shared purpose is a huge reflection on having your strategic plan in place and operating under the board governance model. So that tells me that that's happening pretty much all the time. That's my takeaway anyway, unless someone has a comment about that. On the next page, here's, um, the first time that we see red and black with the responses of never and don't know. And this is probably the, these are the only two questions that this is as prominent, if I remember correctly. Um, and statement number seven talks about carrying out an annual assessment of your performance. And so you've done something in 2020, MSBA, and now in 2024, MSBA would encourage you to do something on an annual basis. It could be the board self-evaluation. It might be just be, uh, taking time at a board meeting or a study session or workshop, whatever, uh, to just talk about how things are going. Uh, you have the option of taking this every year. You can do it without the facilitated discussion. You can do it with the facilitated discussion. It really is your choice. But the bottom line is to just think about doing something on an annual basis. And there, there might be a different time of the year that you would want to have this discussion as well. I know when we, when I was on the board, we did something similar, uh, in the summer months because it was a little bit slower with board meetings. The takeaway on this is if you're doing something on an annual basis, then the next time you take this, you'll probably see all responses looking like always or most of the time. Statement eight talks about setting goals for your improvement. And those will really come from the notes that I'll prepare for you. And then you can talk about what's that one, two, or three things that you'd like to work on in the next year or so. And again, next time you do this, your responses would probably be different. Any questions or comments?
I think, uh, we talked about the N S B A conference about setting something up on that annual basis more regularly. Again, maybe without the, um, without the need for Gail to, to present back to us, but just such it's easy enough. We do a, Janelle's evaluation, some level of evaluation for ourselves would be.
I think the other piece, when I was looking at this, um, I do think there's some value in having, um, the facilitated discussion in incremental years. I, I would agree, Thomas. I don't know that it's, I, I think this is now that we've gone through this tool together. I think there's some opportunities that we can use like at, whether it be a work session or, you know, there's, there are good opportunities to pull some of these resources back in. But I think there's, it's nice to see that longitudinal growth as well as a board.
When I look at an assessments week, um, an implementation that happened was we started taking our strategic plan to not be something sitting on a shelf, right? So we bring that forward. That becomes somewhat of analysis. But if we look at our time when we were building over here, that occupied a fair amount of winter. There was a really, not that we didn't take the time, but concentration moves. Um, we're going to find this fall, we're going to have concentration a lot more on a referendum that we have to have. And so I'm not sure that I see the relevance of the annual assessment as much with us because of the strategic plan that we're moving forward, which kind of is giving us that. And, but we're doing it more often than just once a year. And having the assessment like this where it's the exact assessment or a, a very good analysis from one to the other, to me is 10 times more valuable than doing anything else. The periodic thing, um, when the board changes much, it could be a two-year or whatever. And I think the board can decide what they think, but I, I think it's more, and I don't think it's a good idea during the first year when people are coming.
Really what we kind of talked about is, is not necessarily being annual, but being more consistent in, in doing every other year. That way, if you have board turnover, that new board member has at least one, you know, 12 months under their belt before taking it. And then if it's every other evaluation, you know, if we bring in, just having something more purposely structured that way. It's hard to evaluate. I couldn't imagine, and you guys have been, you know, last February, how would you even dream to fill out this about how we do as a board? It's so, yeah, a year month in, but being a year plus in kind of helps that rhythm.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all your discussion about that. I, I think you, you kind of have a plan of what you'd like to do. And, uh, and just a comment about new board members. If you do find yourself in a situation where brand new board members are really struggling in that forming storming stage. I have worked with some school districts where we've been intentional about doing this early on. They're not going to know how to answer the, the statements. Um, there'll be a lot of nevers or, or maybe a lot of don't knows actually. But what it becomes is an orient, an additional orientation tool of really doing a deep dive into each of those standards of what the board's role is. So sometimes that's how it's used. But I think you have a really good idea of how, how you can use this. So be intentional about maybe just taking a look at how you're working together as a team. Um, once a year can be just kind of an informal discussion at a board meeting and then figure out what the, uh, the sequence might be for you. Okay, I will scroll on to the next set of questions then. And we're still in standard one, conduct and ethics. We're in the new benchmark with respecting and advocating mutual understanding of roles and responsibilities. And the statement that I'll draw your attention to is 11, using written protocols. And so this is something that I have a conversation with, I think, just about every school that I meet with as far as having written protocols. Now you've got a number of always and most of the time. Let me describe to you what my interpretation of this is, and then you can share with me if, um, that is, is how, is that how you responded or if you responded based on that. So written protocols would be something that would complement your code of ethics policy. It would be those unwritten rules or procedures more so in how you operate internally. So it might be a protocol of you're going to utilize the board governance model. A, a protocol might be how you handle emails, who responds to them. It might be, um, how you use district issued computers. Might be orientation for new board members. It might be who is able to talk to legal counsel. Who is the spokesperson for the media? How do you address one another at board meetings? How committees, uh, membership is created? Is it something that the board chair makes the appointment or you talk about it at board meetings? So it's those little operating things, um, social media would be another one. And the reason that it's nice to have it in writing, if you don't have it in writing, is so that as board superintendent team members transition, it is there for new board members, new members to reflect upon. And the other reason that it's nice to have in writing is that it's, it's orientation, of course. And then if, um, you have a current board member who maybe goes a little bit rogue one way, it's a good way that a board chair can help reel them back in. So that's kind of my definition. But with that, does that sound like something that you have in place right now?
I'd say still most of the time. I mean, I, I just wrote down a note, is it actually in writing? I mean, I think we, the way that we go about it is consistent every single year. It's in writing in our board notes and it's in writing in our, you know, but is it actually a documentation policy type writing? I mean, I can say probably some things that aren't, but.
I would say, um, when we brought the new board members on, we did do an active oriented. And it was, um, there was a lot spelled out in writing that was presented and shared. Um, documents were linked so that it could be, um, referenced and gotten back to. And we, so we did try, um, you know, there, I think, so I would say our new board members had more of that, um, when they, when they came on uh, than our, um, existing board members did. When I came in, so I, I, I would say most of the time was appropriated.
Yeah, I see. I'm sure we can find something out there that's not.
Of course.
In writing, but it'd be, it'd be.
I don't remember us even talking about much of that.
When you started? It started when I, when, when Matt, when we came on the board, especially with four brand new members. Matt kind of had, I don't think we really had it structured in the writing, but he just said, we need to get these guys up to speed. And then it grew into, you know, you know, with you developing more of a structured orientation process.
Well, we did have big movements.
Yeah.
It was one here or two, or we came on, Rick, you came on by yourself. That covered four years, so we didn't have a lot of it. But then we, then we were getting where it was bigger changes.
I think the biggest one was when we came on, Bruce and myself, or four came on at once.
Yeah, that's true. That is probably the first night.
No, you could buy the three examples. I was on the group of four.
You were on the group of four.
So you guys were in the group of three at one point in time.
But before that, they came on before I did, so I don't know who all came on that time.
It, it sounds like you have things in place. What I might do is in my summary, I'll share that list and that way you can do a quick cross-reference. So if there's things that you're like, oh yeah, maybe we could include that as well. You've got it. If it's not of any value, you can just disregard it. And, and the other little tip on this too is for some of those protocols, I love the fact that you utilize that for orientating your new board members. The other little tip that we sometimes share with boards is to review some of those protocols at your organizational meeting, along with your code of ethics policy, so that everyone is in agreement at the beginning of that calendar year that these are the way, the, the norms of how you are going to operate. So, very good. I will continue on with few more statements here with statement 12 govern using policies that align with research-based best practices. And I think you're probably all familiar with the fact that you never have to worry. They are research-based best practices because you are participating in the model policies that Minnesota School Boards Association offers. And what we do, and boy, we, with the legislative session just starting yesterday, what our staff do during this session is to continually watch what kinds of things are affecting education. And as it gets to the end of the session, then we'll start to shift in gear, not me, but our staff will start to shift in gear in creating the policies that will align with any legislative changes. And before we send those to you, they also are reviewed by our legal counsel. So that when you get them, you can be 100% confident in them and you can then adapt as needed or adopt them. And I know that you had an opportunity to look at and adopt a lot of policies shortly after last legislative session, and that could be the case this year. But I wanted to make sure that you understood that that is part of the process. The other statement that I was going to comment on is 14 with the collaboration. And MSBA tries really hard to provide you with a lot of opportunities for collaboration. Things like our leadership conference, which I know some of you attended, the summer leadership seminar, the phases one, two, three, and four, the negotiations workshops that we provide, the officers workshops. We have our coffee and conversations on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. The board chair chat on the first Wednesday of the month. We have our third Thursday webinars. We have our delegate assembly, our advocacy tour, our day at the Capitol, and our government relations or Friday chats. And so at each of those, there are opportunities to interact with board members from around the state and always a chance to ask questions and do some problem solving as well. So I wanted to put that out there. I know that you've got other opportunities where you can collaborate as well. But those are some things that MSBA has in place for you. Any comments about the items on this page?
I'd comment on 13. So I'm sure that I was a most of the time on 13. Because, and it wasn't really based on us specifically. This question was more on policies, not based on MSBA, but I'm not always sure the legislator has the students in mind. So it was hard for me to say it's really good because we're doing policies and we're accepting policies. But sometimes we can look at them and think, you know, I'm not sure this is really the best thing for the students. So that's where I come from.
Okay.
And otherwise I would have been another one that would have gone to the green side, but I couldn't do it there.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Anybody else have any comments on any of these statements? Okay, I'm going to keep scrolling through. We can always go back if you need to. This benchmark talks about the healthy relationships that you have. I don't think I had any comments on anything here. It's hard to have comments on everything that says always and most of the time, other than I will say to be very proud of yourselves because I sometimes interact with boards where even question 17, treating everyone with respect is not, does not have very favorable responses. So be very proud of that.
And Gail, I think this really goes back to this one here, especially question number 15, really goes back to the presentation that was done at the, at the conference. And thank you folks at MSBA for, you know, that allowing Janelle and, and the group that she brought down to actually do a good presentation on the 3C.
You're very welcome. We were glad to have you a part of that as well. The next set of questions, we're still under conduct and ethics. This is talking about working as an effective and collaborative team. Again, there are not many things to comment on based on your responses. I will mention statement 21, orientation of new board members. You've talked about that a little bit. I just also wanted to check with, for your newest board members. So any comments that you have about your orientation? Ron, Rachel?
I thought it was well done.
I thought it was too, yeah.
There's a lot of information, I'm not going to lie.
I, I know I was, I was never the never on this one, so I, I don't know.
Okay.
I was like fact-fingered something, so I don't think.
So did, so did your board provide mentors for you?
I, I don't want to say really yet, kind of, but maybe, maybe not in an official capacity. But, but very much in, so of course, we, I mean, we have a beautiful community out here. Me that we know each other. Kind of grew up, I, I've known Bruce as a child, not, not that I've had, you know, like a deep relationship with, but I knew, I knew who he was. You know, in the bell camps, you know, it's, you, you can't throw a stone without hitting the bell camp sometime. So I mean, I guess maybe just really knowing the people around. But then coming on the board, like Ron, you know, we're fairly close in age as far as going to school here. So there's kind of that, like a relationship there as far as knowing things, so. But yeah, no, I wouldn't say in a, in a official capacity where we were assigned somebody, but maybe more so in, in that unofficial capacity of who you knew and, and what you knew that person was bringing to the table.
Okay, very good.
But it says here, sharing responsibility with superintendent. So did you feel that the rest of the board was available? Or I mean, I'm just curious how you felt.
Oh, yeah. For me coming on, I felt like, like Thomas and I had discussions, Cheryl and I had, I mean, going to whoever. I felt comfortable that way. That's just me.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't afraid to ask questions. I guess I came unglued when we had the idea of wanting to be prepped before a meeting. So that's where I had a problem. I thought that wasn't great, so. But now we ask questions, so.
My question was, you know, did you feel that, or did we feel like we were at another world? Well, we're the old members, you know, we know everything, we're not.
I think if a person wanted to be on the board, you have to want, you have, first of all, you have to want to be on the board. Second of all, you have to want to be able to do some research and ask questions, so. I think it's up to the individual to bounce ideas off of other people and ask questions, so.
Well, I appreciate all the feedback on the orientation. It sounds like you did a really nice job with getting everybody up to speed. And you know what? If you hadn't, these results would have looked a lot different too. We kind of talked about that before. So what you're doing is, is working well. Okay, so. So that walks us through conduct and ethics. Now we're going to transition into vision. And with vision, looking at that big picture for your school district, a lot of the things within vision tie directly or reflect your strategic plan. And so again, when I look at these, I really don't know that there's any comments to make. You talked about, you're just all in agreement with the policies and certainly policies are what guide you. And having that shared purpose, as it says in 24, shared purpose of improving student achievement. As I looked at your strategic plan, and I've got it in front of me here too, just knowing that your, your three main areas, growth, communication, and then the financial allocation, financial steward, or fiscal stewardship. And I like the fact that you just have three. Sometimes I work with schools and they're pie in the sky and they want, you know, four, five, six areas that they want to focus on. That is an awful lot. I always say, you know, one for sure, well, probably two to three, because you're going to have something like growth where you're talking about student achievement and what's best for the students. But then, you know, what are the other two or three areas that you want to focus on? So I think with yours, I mean, it's just very, very clear and that will help you as you govern. It appeared from the information that I received too, that you included stakeholders when you developed your strategic plan. We've got a couple of don't know. And so maybe, Janelle, do you want to, or it can be, well, Janelle or one of the seasoned board members, do you want to talk about the group that you brought together or how you gathered information? That might be helpful.
Sure, I can, I guess I'll kind of speak to what I understand and then the board members who were here can elaborate on that. I think the, the trickiest part of our strategic plan development is that it started at the onset of COVID. And then there was a lot of virtual collaboration. And so the, the community meetings and those types of things took place virtually. And so my understanding is that it, it just looked very different than some strategic planning had looked in the past. And you'll notice that, and then that's also attributed to the extension of some of our dates and our timelines. You know, we had, there were, we've also just had some initiatives that as a district were underway when I came on board and I'm so grateful they were because a, a lot of it has been around professional development and letters training. And we are, that really consumed a lot of the focus for a while. But all that being said, I think we, when I came on board, that was one of the things that I really looked through was to have a, a sound strategic plan to help guide my decision-making and my recommendations for the board. And so that's kind of what I understood about how it was developed. And I don't know, so then I'll just pause and let other board members who are here kind of add to that maybe.
When we did the first one, we had lots of people involved. We invited people from the public and everything else, and we put the strategic plan together. But I, I think we have moved along with COVID and time that's gone by. We have kept it active, more active through our relationship with everything being public that we talk about, right? So it's on every time we talk about it. Recently I got out of some discussion you were talking about, Janelle, that maybe it does come a time where we're not developing a new strategic plan, but we maybe have the public come and give us some direct input. And we maybe organize together, kind of talk about it, but not to develop one to get some more opinions on what are the directions or visions or whatever it may be. And I thought you brought that up in recent months. So I think we're moving pretty well there. That somebody's in a position that we don't know. There hasn't been anything for quite a while that's been direct. Individually it kind of is. We all have the strategic plan. We put it on there, we run into people that have maybe a question about something, but.
Yeah, we moved it up to sheet. I know it's in a lot of the virtual meetings, the virtual options. And, and it was definitely different. It was, you know, difficult in some sense of you not capturing probably as many community members as you typically maybe caught because, you know, not everybody has the capabilities or the expertise. Again, at the onset of COVID, before everything per virtual, it was just like, people were just stepping into it. And so I think we missed, you know, and certainly had opportunities and we missed people. But again, we didn't have a lot of choices because we weren't allowing anybody in the buildings. They weren't allowed, but you know, it just, everything was shut down. So, but on the flip side, I know we had stakeholders from community voices and stakeholders that don't necessarily live in our community 24/7, but they're very active in our community when they're here, that also were able to jump on because they were, you know, they have their other house in Minneapolis or Twin Cities or wherever else, or they're on vacation and like, you know, I wouldn't, you know, took priority to be part of this one hour meeting. You know, whereas they would have also missed that or typically would always miss those opportunities hadn't been in person because they wouldn't have drove back or, you know, skipped their vacation for, for, for strategic planning meeting. But, so it was positive, negative, both ends of things. But there, and I want to say I would have sat in five or six different Zoom calls with varying levels of, of community members.
You know, Gail, one of the other things I think I'll just add is, so we, we've recently surveyed our, our community for support for a, a tech levy that we need to redo. And so we're trying to determine what that level of support looks like, that type of education needs to, to be distributed to the community. But then in addition to that, we also expanded the, just the questions, excuse me, the questions for our community around how, what do they want from our students? And what do they hope to, what do they hope that our students graduate from? You know, what skills and, and what are the things? So I think there's going to be some really good data that comes out of that. That will be a good foundation for us to, maybe we, we, we maintain our three goals of, of growth, communication, and fiscal stewardship. But yet, but then that we can maybe re-prioritize or re-identify some different goals or, and, and just incorporate some more information. And, and maybe from there we develop some smaller subgroups that we dig in deeper. So I think there's a lot of really good opportunity that, and, and that's just been, I think, you know, one of the things that we tried to, I think the board had really good discussion around how to get out in front of the community to ask questions and communicate. And the survey has, has been an option to do that.
Great. And I, so thank you for that. And I scrolled on to the next set of questions because it really kind of ties in nicely with what you were, you were all saying as well. It does seem to me that where you're at in your current strategic plan, I, I like your thought of, you know, now you are doing some additional data gathering. And it might be that you're, there's a sense that, like Janelle has said, that those three areas really continue to be your, your target, your focus, your strategic direction. But the tweaking then will come into some of these new things that you are learning that are needs that can become new goals, new objectives. And you're just, I think, really set nicely for that. And then bringing back some of the people you talked to the last time. But obviously you can expand that. You may not know who, who was a part of it the first time, but if you do, then you can. um, if you do, then you can certainly expand it too. So I like that. And that um, really ties to the three statements that you see right now. I'm not surprised based on some of the things you've been sharing that your responses again are always and most of the time. So as you move on, uh, just knowing that it will be a continuation, looking at statement 28, that once you have those, that new direction in place, policies, decision-making, budgeting will all kind of tie into that as well. And then what do you do to monitor your strategic plan? I heard you say that you keep it close by and that it didn't get put on a shelf. So do you um, have opportunities where you're reviewing the strategic plan or how does that happen?
Um, would you like me to respond?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Um, so when, what we did is we have created a, um, a strategic plan tracker. Um, and when I first came on board, um, uh, it was established and it was just kind of there. And, and really what it does, Gail, is it breaks down um, the tasks and activities. And then I, we were able to kind of move it in a visual sense so you could see the things that we were working on. Um, and then in, in, in an effort to really kind of address the whole strategic, strategic plan, not just what we're working on, um, we ju, we revamped it a little bit to be um, kind of almost like a, it's, it's got every activity that we're doing. And then um, just periodically throughout the year, I'm just adding reflection of what it is that's happening in the buildings to support that one. If we're in a place where we maybe need to do some foundational work because we're not prepared to address that yet. And so, um, and then we're bringing that, I'm presenting that to the board um, at various times. Uh, and it kind of depends on what's happening. Uh, you know, if there's a lot of budget finance, we might not be, um, unless we're needing to make financial decisions, we might come back to, okay, this was an area we prioritized and this is why we're making a financial thinking around that. Um, but at the same time, just trying to um, keep that at the forefront of not only, um, I would say not only for the school board, but I would say for our staff and our community. Um, I, I did learn that um, there are still, that's just an area that our, our staff didn't know a lot about the strategic plan. And so making sure that they understood and they, they could, they knew it inside and out and what was in there and um, I think it was one of those things that you kind of take for granted, like you were part of this process. I thought you would know, you know, and so not making assumptions around that either. So
Right.
I think the board has been very um, they've, I, I heard the feedback that it's been appreciated to have it presented and, and um, shared out uh, throughout board meetings. And so that's a part of how we've done that is through the tracker.
Okay, perfect.
It's, it's almost monthly. I know we miss a month here and there, but it's almost, almost monthly that we review, like you said, projects, tasks going on in the district and how they reflect back to strategic plan and then where are they at in the planning process or the implementation process of those projects and tasks across the district and. And you walk into Janelle's office often times, she's got project tasks in the board and where they fit in the strategic plan too, you know what I mean? It just, so with their, you know, the, the leadership, you know, this discussing or they have teachers coming discussing, they have that vision on
Right there.
in, in her office and understand that that has to fall in one of these buckets, you know, as, as a key priority, so.
And, and when, when Janelle took on that, that effort to go back and re-looker the, uh, the strategic plan, like she said, it was on a tractor, but when, when she took on that effort to go back and kind of lay it out, uh, I found it extremely, I guess, readable, to have an understanding because everything was there versus trying to hunt it. She did a fabulous job of laying that out. It's, it's very easy to read and you know exactly where you're at. Uh, day to day, month to month type thing, so.
Perfect. Wonderful. Sounds like you're doing a great job with that. I am gonna continue on because this will segue us to some of the next statements too under vision. And here we're talking about goals for student achievement. As I looked at your strategic plan, I see these two statements being reflected under the growth area of your strategic plan. Um, that you have those opportunities to have that uh, student achievement at the forefront. And that walks us through vision. Any comments or questions about anything related to vision before we move on to structure? Okay. And then again with structure, we're talking about the physical structure and the organizational structure. So starting with the physical um, first in these two statements, safety and security. And the um, takeaway for this is that the work of this is, and the leadership to make sure it happens is the responsibility of your superintendent. And then as board members, you want to ensure that that's happening. And so there will likely be times where I, I'm guessing that you have opportunities to discuss any updates with facilities, um, any safety, security revisions that need to be made, those kinds of things. And based on your responses, I'm thinking that happens. So I, I will scroll on again unless somebody wants to comment on.
Just, just mention that I think, you know, we went through kind of a rough time there with Bill Eaton. We have an excellent person on, on board now, uh, that I think we can all, we all trust.
Okay.
And I think he's doing a great job. And I think that's reflected in these as well.
Yep.
That, so, there was, but there was a time we were, somebody retired and we tried something, it didn't work out and, but I think we're on good track right now for that.
Okay, very good. That gives you a level of comfort too, knowing that you've got that person in, in, um, as a part of your team as well. So now we're going to segue under structure to talk about staff. And these three statements talk about, first of all, hiring and retention. And I, I should also say the word policy is used here and I hope that didn't throw any, anybody. Um, policies, procedures, practices can be used kind of interchangeably. Um, but here we're talking about hiring and retention. We're talking about evaluating staff. And we're talking about staff development or professional development for your staff. And the takeaway here is that each of these three items are the responsibility of your superintendent. At the same time, as board members, you want to ensure that they are in place and that they are happening. So at, you know, given times of the year, uh, at board meetings, you might want to make sure that there is some type of discussion about what's happening with hiring practices or if there are some uh, retention practices that are being implemented. Uh, staff evaluations, that's one thing I didn't have a clue on, but I was very curious as a professional, always being evaluated myself. So it wasn't that I wanted to know about the performance of my um, husband and wife team who are schoolteachers that live next door. It was more just what's the process and when does it happen? And then with staff development, uh, likewise, what are some of those professional development opportunities or staff development opportunities that will be offered prior to the school year getting started or throughout? So I'm not sure. We've got some don't knows here. Anybody have any comments about either, any of these three statements?
I, uh, I don't know about question number thirty-six. I, I don't remember how I answered that, but I will say that staff development is something that we do talk about here.
Okay.
Not, not specifically how, it, 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 the development in, in the fact of where the teachers are at, going back to strategic plan. Uh, some of that is where teachers are at or to where they're at. I'm finishing up some of the things that are brought in. Uh, Janelle does talk about the fact that there are things that she's looking at, possibility of, of bringing on some type of new uh, teaching aid for the teachers. So like I said, I, I guess I just don't, I don't understand. Um, I, I don't, I don't know how that was answered that way. I guess I, unless I did something wrong, I, I don't know how I answered. Uh, the other one that, the other comment I, I have to make on it, uh, as far as just taking a look at it as an overall picture, I, I think it may be the confidence that we have with our superintendent of knowing roles and responsibilities that, uh, you know, we really just evaluate her in a sense and then what she presents to us. And we do leave it, uh, to the superintendent. In, in this case, Janelle, like I said, I think she does a fabulous job of where she at and, and how she's doing with, with, as far as evaluation of teacher, staff and all that kind of stuff. That we have the confidence that, that she is supporting the, what the, the school board or what the uh, school district needs as far as that, so.
Okay.
I, so I'm not really concerned with the, the, a lot of the I don't knows except for that last one. I'm concerned with that because I, I know how much information she provides to us, so.
Sounds good. And it could just simply be, uh, not truly understanding the statement when somebody was taking the evaluation. But I think, um, this has been really helpful to have this discussion. And if board members do have any additional questions down the road, I would say fair game to bring those to Janelle. And I know that she'd be happy to just talk more about what the process is with each of these. But the, uh, one thing that I would feel really sad to hear, and I've heard this, and that's why I always ask the question, I have, um, heard this with some of the schools I've worked with when we get to this section. As one example, uh, I've had some schools where it has come out that staff have not been evaluated. And then we have a conversation. And so, you know, that's where that, that uh, balance um, comes in there where the superintendent's responsible, but the board wants to ensure that that's happening.
But I guess I have a question. Who's on this call? Is it, what's on this tour?
Yeah, this is recorded.
I, I guess I'm, I kind of feel this is a patting each other on the back, on the back session, but I guess, uh, I guess I answered do not know on some of these questions because uh, we're not really involved in al, uh, evaluating a, a certain teacher or anything, uh. And, and even like negotiations, it just seems like there's, there's always so much change. It's hard to find people. Yet people want to move the step-up structure as far as for pay and, and, and it seems like it just kind of gets to be a game. I mean, we, we have to have some type of a structure to, I don't want to pick on a specific example, but I'm, just use a broad figure of it. Somebody wants a twenty-five percent raise after a year and fifty cents. But we've got individuals that want to eliminate steps, but then increase the higher steps. I guess I'm still learning, but uh, I guess this is a recorded thing and I'll just follow on from the shoulder.
Yeah, no, I, I think your comments are, um, are appreciated about that. It's more, I think for board members to understand how the process works. And that might be something that you do want to take a, take some time to talk.
I think we're kind of limited on some of that stuff. Yeah, I don't know if I want to open that can of learning, so.
Right. And then certainly as it relates to negotiations, and I'm sure you're like many schools and kind of in the, the process of that. But certainly with negotiations, you do have opportunities to go into closed session for negotiation strategy. And you can talk out, you know, talk about some of those things as well, dependent upon the process that you're using at Painesville. Well, thanks for commenting on that. Then, uh, the next set of questions talks, kind of ties back to the physical structure, again with learning essentials, um, your technology curriculum, the, and the facilities. And as I looked at all of these, you were very cohesive in your responses. Sounds like you have a good understanding with each of them. The one that I was going to comment on for you is statement forty, talking about a process that includes community and parent involvement in selecting curriculum. So this one, I interpret it in a very broad sense. Um, it sounds very, very focused with curriculum. But um, think about it in terms of the parent, community and parent involvement. That's really built in. The curriculum selection is actually tied into the world's best workforce advisory committee. However, are there other ways that you involve community and parents? Um, and do you have a world's best workforce committee?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think the other way that we involve community, as Janelle had spoken earlier about this uh, survey that's, that's gone on. I think that's kind of the way I look at it. I, I try to stay away from the word curriculum because I don't know what that really means. Uh, what, and what I mean by that is, I know that, uh, you know, Minnesota education, you know, as far as the, the state has a standard for education and, which means that, that uh, parents aren't gonna, parents and, and school board is, are not involved in what's determined down legislature, legislatively. But, and I know I just said that word wrong, but anyways, uh, what I looked at was the curriculum based off of how we communicate with the uh, uh, with this, the parents, uh, how we get information out. Because that's one of the big things that we do talk about. I know it's part of the strategic plan. You know, and, and, and getting that and using that word, like you said, kind of more in a broader sense as far as curriculum, so.
And I think, uh, on this one, when I re, read the word curriculum, I mean, that could mean a lot of things to me.
Yeah.
I think I got too specific on that.
Hmm.
I think curriculum in a broad sense that we do involve the community and what we offer our kids, what we think is important for the school to offer our kids with their CTE programs and the nursery program and those kinds of things. When I read curriculum, I'm thinking of, we don't let the parents come in and tell us which books we're going to use.
Right, yeah, exactly. I, I probably narrowed it down way too far. That might be one of those that was.
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the first year of, we're, we're, we have a block schedule. And at least we're trying to evolve it. So it's, it, it isn't necessarily etched in stone. But, but we're kind of learning as we're going. And I guess I got a credit to the ones that, that, you know, there, there was concern from, from a number of individuals. Um, and, and we had parent involvement. Um, but at least that, we heard that and the people that are, are putting that schedule together are going to do some tweaks to it, so.
Yeah, I think that, that kind of, question forty-one kind of settles that one for us. That we do believe that there's regular evaluation of our curriculum, which is what we're doing. It's an ongoing process.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Totally. Okay. I think, um, the takeaway with forty again is just making sure that you do have that community and parent involvement that becomes one of, um, they become your best allies because they understand been a part of the decision-making. The next couple of questions are, uh, talking again about technology and long-term facilities. I don't think there's anything more that we really need to say about that. It's, I, I, you know, overall, it's the superintendent's responsibility to make sure that that happens. And as a board, you want to ensure that it's happening. So you're probably getting some updates at a board meeting related to that. Uh, next in structure, we're talking about the learning environment, the classrooms. Uh, here it looks like everybody is, again, very cohesive in saying yes um, about the expectations and the learning environment. We've got a one don't know. So if there is a question that anybody has about evaluating district operations, you can ask away. And again, with these, ultimately, this is something that your superintendent is overseeing. And then as board members, there may be some updates that, um, you're receiving. And it could come in the form of, you know, here are some things that will make the classroom more efficient. We'd like to purchase this. We'd like to rearrange that. Those would be the kinds of things that you probably would be hearing from your superintendent and other administrators and might even be something that is requiring, um, investment of, of uh, some funds to make those changes. With, uh, this set of questions under structure, it's talking about budget and the funding, keeping the community informed. Uh, public input during the budget process. Excuse me, budget development. And, um, in your strategic plan, you have one area, financial allocation and fiscal stewardship. So you are being very, very, very intentional on that. With statement forty-seven, this is one that the responses always look kind of similar and. the responses always look kind of similar. And if there are additional ways that you can get the public involved in the budgeting process or just simply understanding school finance, which is kind of hard to say because you and I know as board members, it took me a long time to get my head wrapped around school finance. And probably I still have a lot of questions about it. But I think the more opportunities that you can create for community stakeholders to understand that school financing is not as easy as it might seem. It's not quite like balancing our own checkbook. Some schools have actually created a finance committee of financial experts within the school district. People who are, are deal with finance, who are really interested and could, and who could understand the process. And they use them as kind of a sounding board and also as a group that then can help promote and support the decisions that you as a board are making. I had one school district say that they had a committee like that. And from that, they actually had some people that, when there were openings on the school board, members of that finance committee said, hey, I'd like, I'd like to be on the board. I really understand this. So there's some nice benefits to that. So if there are some things that you can think about in how you can help educate the public with school finance or the budget process, I would encourage you to do so. Does anybody have any thoughts or any comments about that?
I think that, that area drives me crazy. Because we're dealing with a budget and we're talking about bringing the public into it. It's at all our meetings and stuff, but we develop, our superintendent develops budgets all over the place. And when they have their funding here, we don't even know about it till all our budgets are due at the state anyway. It's like, are you kidding me? And so, your comments about bring financial experts in, nobody runs like that. I mean, if the state's going to give you some money, they need to get you some money. And you have some basis to base it on or, or a year like this year where our superintendent is scrambling on on not completely written new rules, right? And expenses that we have. Well, okay, we got to work that into the budget. This is, it's a messy, messy thing. And unfortunately, a lot of it goes back to legislature again. They have made it complicated enough that I talk, I look at bringing the public into that. Man, that is, and not that we hide anything, it's all there. But I think they recognize that we are just scrambling because we don't have, our superintendent doesn't have good solid numbers to work with. There's always these monster variations out there that can affect it one way or another. Just an area that really gets me.
And you do a good job of explaining that when we were supposed to get like five percent, but then they net it back and it was really only like three and a half.
Yeah, well, this year was a good example.
And I, I guess that's where people like to hear the high number. But in reality, we're, we're not getting that. And I, I just, I don't understand. So why, why even talk that way? I guess is the problem I have.
Absolutely. And the funding that school districts get are earmarked, are earmarked for certain pots of money or certain funding. So it's not just, these dollars can go to whatever. Usually they have some parameters around them as well.
Or like this year where we got funding and then we also got assigned a whole bunch of expenses that we have to take out of it. Okay. Really? How are you supposed to manage that?
You know, different things like that kind of threw us through.
And big numbers, not little numbers that have to come out of it. So when we're dealing with a net, it appears like we've got lots of money. I, I think when that's all, we probably didn't get that much actually.
I would agree.
Can I just add one piece here? I think, I think that one of the things that I think we did really well last year and tried, and I think we have an opportunity in front of us again, is during the operating referendum. I think there was a really good opportunity to try to educate the public on funding sources, how it comes in, what can be done with what type of money. And I think that as we're looking forward to going out for a tech levy, there's another opportunity in front of us to communicate again, like what does it fit? How, how are we funded? Where it comes in, how it can be used for, you know, I think there's some good opportunities there. I, I think the, what becomes, I think what becomes difficult in that is that sometimes it is so complex that I don't, you know, people kind of tune out and they, you know, it's so we're just trying to find different ways to get information out there, whether it's in the newspaper, whether it's on a a public meeting, at a board meeting, at a, you know, whatever, just try different platforms and make it as, as simple as possible without you know, it's just, I think we've, we've got an opportunity ahead of us and I think we did well last time. But we just got to keep trying to communicate.
I guess I'd like to see it simplified.
Which is tough. No, I know, I know. Good luck, right? Yeah.
Well, maybe I'll go back to pictures and, you know, I mean, I, and honestly, I think, I think sometimes if we can try to to correlate it to a household budget in some way or form that people. But it's just, you know, and I've, I've, I've got some ideas and I've seen some colleagues that have done some nice presentations. So maybe I can try to figure ours out that way too. But I, I agree, trying to make it simple and straightforward is just, it's a challenge.
It's pretty simple. Ron, the governor pours all this.
Definitely a challenge. Well, it sounds like you've got some ideas that you can use too to keep the public informed. And, and I think that's really the, the takeaway, the key thing on that. And I like Janelle's idea of just sharing ideas from fellow colleagues and other school districts that have created some, some ways of sharing that information. This set of questions all tie again to your strategic plan and talks about that continuous improvement in student achievement, which again, I, I believe you have built in under that growth area of your strategic plan. And I think as I look at these, this is exactly what Janelle described a little bit ago when we talked about the review of the strategic plan and, and how that, those updates are provided. So I don't have any other comments unless the group has comments that you'd like to make on those.
Mine is on the last one, fifty-four. I think it's difficult for the school to really tell people all that goes on here. And what we actually have improved and what we accomplished. And the communication is an issue. Lots of it's on the website, right? All of that. But when we come to referendum and stuff, a lot of our voting populations not necessarily in there all the time, watching all this great stuff happen. And so Janelle's incorporated it and we've tried to do that with our surveys to get to everybody. But I, I think we can always increase that. We have to keep in touch with the people that are eighty years old, interested in education. And they just don't have any idea what goes on over here. The leadership of the Painsville Press isn't what it, our, our press isn't, leadership of presses everywhere probably are way down because there's so many sources of information that the survey that we sent is sent to every single person. So it has helped with that, but I believe we can do more. Where we have more getting out. And if it's no more than maybe some big thing that's going on in the classroom. We can read all we want about sports, but there is a lot of stuff where people are learning in this system that nobody knows about. And just my personal comment. So I would have been a yellow on that one.
Okay. Good feedback on that and good ideas as well. As we scroll to the next set of questions, these all tie back to evaluating your superintendent and having the clear and focused expectations. So what's the process that your school district uses for evaluating your superintendent? What's in place at this point?
We have to fill in the evaluation form?
Yeah, we, we have evaluation form that we have with, for Janelle and it's done twice a year actually. So we've done more to annually.
I want to say that I struggle with our evaluation forms. One of the goals that we've talked about over time is we have a strategic plan over here. And we have a superintendent evaluation here. They are very closely tied together. They are not two separate items. Even the MSBA always treats it as two separate things. And I believe that's wrong. I believe they should be treated very close together. There may be things in our survey that would be say particular things, but it's hard for us because all of us have something else to do. We are not developing our own evaluation for our superintendent. So we're using out of the box things to evaluate her. And when we evaluate, there's stuff in there that we skip over a little bit because it's kind of not applicable. And we talk about our, our strategic plan, but I think somehow it'd be nice to see how that could tie closer together.
Well, we must have been listening to you provide feedback at some point in time because really, the recommendation from MSBA is very, very similar to what you were just describing. So a few thoughts with superintendent evaluation. Make sure that you do it. First of all, the board chair should be the person that gets it initiated. Get a date on the, on the calendar so that that doesn't become a barrier for you. And then have a tool. You do have the MSBA one that you can utilize for pieces of evaluation if you would choose to do that. Remember that for superintendent evaluation, you can go into closed session. Is that something that you do? Perfect. Sometimes schools don't, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that you could and you should do that. That's a time you can, you can rarely do that. And so that's a time where you can and you can speak very candidly. And then here's where I was getting to hearing you about the strategic plan. So the messaging from MSBA is that the goals of your strategic plan really should become your superintendent's goals. Remember the document that I shared earlier? Let's see if I can put my hand on it. Whoop, one right here. The having goal alignment. And that was exactly what I was talking about is taking the goals from your strategic plan, tying them to the superintendent goals, board goals, staff, student and community goals. So you are really spot on with your comment about that. And if my colleague Barb Dorn was here, who works with soup evaluation, she'd do this. She'd say, you should have one, but no more than three goals for your superintendent on an annual basis. Because your superintendent has a school to run. And so having one or two, up to three things to focus on is great plenty. And so I would encourage you to kind of use that mindset the next time that you do sit down to talk about superintendent, superintendent evaluation and how you might transition that. And just, you know, look at your strategic plan as it is now. What are the things that you're currently working on in this calendar year and into the next? And maybe pick out a few things from there that would make sense. Is that helpful as you think about that?
I think so, but I, I'm going to tell you, I think the evaluation has not caught up with your strategic plan thought process. We are analyzing in the strategic, in your questionnaires that we use, because it's handy for us. Questions that are interesting, sometimes not applicable. But then we also use designs that you might suggest and information about how we have vision and all of that. Where are the questions that are tied to those parts? But the questionnaire that you offer us doesn't open up the door very well for that. So it's always a discussion we initiate on our own. So when you say that we're coordinating together, I'm not seeing it. I see it as two separate functions that we're doing. And now we need to take what we are thinking along with you and get it on this paper. So when our chairperson comes to you next time, we give a evaluation form that follows that process. That would just be my suggestion.
No, absolutely. And that is a well taken. The tool that is out there right now is a document that was created with Minnesota School Boards Association and Minnesota Association of School Administrators, which is the professional organization that superintendents are a part of. And so those discussions are actually happening of how to really work towards that. At the same time, we know that the wheels turn sometimes really slow because of all the things that are happening. So do bear with us. But that does not mean that you can't deviate and, you know, have that discussion when you are doing your evaluation. And there might still be some nuggets of, of categories that you pull out of that tool. And some of the procedural things in that document are very helpful too. So hopefully that will help you move forward until we get, get a newer tool, a revised tool. So thank you for sharing that too. And thanks for your patience on that. Under accountability, the statements here are all talking about student academic progress and reviewing the data, closing the achievement gaps. And my comment to board superintendent teams about these statements is to obsess on results, obsess on student achievement. And boards that are high performing, this is the number one thing that they are concerned about. They're not as concerned about what color carpet, because that's probably not something that should be at the board table or the type of the wheels. I use that example a lot, the type of the wheels that are on a bus. But it is really about student academic success. So do keep that in mind moving forward. And I would say from your feedback here, it would appear to me that you must have a fair amount of discussion related to this. And it's again tied into your strategic plan, so I wouldn't be surprised. Does anybody have any comments that you'd like to make about any of these statements?
I don't need to hold this up here by any means, but the world's best workforce. Our superintendent has taken the world's best workforce, which for years I was on it and I thought it was a total waste of time. It was sent to the state and I'm sure a year later they couldn't even find her survey. That was my impression. She has taken our world's best workforce and created a in that process has created an extreme evaluation of all these areas to review the data, find out where the students are, looking at the grades. And right now, I think we are doing outstanding in trying to monitor that. But in my estimation, she has taken a document that was worthless in my mind to something that is valuable for us. And now we don't have people in the school working on something that's a waste of time. We have them working on something that's valuable to us to implement and, and track our data.
Very good. Any other comments about this set of statements? That is accountability. And then the fifth and final standard is advocacy and communication. And with these statements, we're talking about the collaboration that happens. And with statement sixty-two, I'll just mention that the advocating at the local, state and federal levels, a lot of that is done via MSBA through our governmental relations team, through our advocacy tour, our delegate assembly, our grassroots opportunity for boards to lift up items that could be presented at the, during the legislative session to keep you informed. To keep you informed, we have our Friday chats, which will start this Friday, nine AM. Best half hour of my Fridays always, because Denise Dietrich and Kim Lewis will give us an update on what's happened this past week and what's kind of coming up in the week ahead. And there's also a chance to ask questions as well. So certainly, we're doing a lot of that on your behalf. But then individually, individual school districts, I know, work with your local decision makers as well. With statement sixty-three, it talks about the racial and ethnic understanding and sensitivity. And I think that's really just using that lens that you look through. And it's ensuring that there's a sense of belonging for all students. Oh, let's see. Oh, sixty-five. And a process for responding to questions, concerns, feedback from citizens. So what happens with emails that an individual board member receives or all board members receive? Any process in place that you're using?
Well, my, I think that process, at least to me, is, is it goes to the superintendent first. We do not deal with it until we've talked to her and then let her deal with it to the best of our ability. And I think in, in terms of community, emails are one thing, phone calls are another thing. I think in the phone calls, it's, it's basically, we don't, I don't think we share anything. You know, we just try to listen to as best we can and then say we'll, we'll pass it on. Same thing we do with public comment here. We don't respond to public comment. We let the superintendent deal with that.
Perfect.
So.
Okay.
And then, and, or if somebody came to me and had a complaint about a coach, I would say, well, you go to the athletic director. You know, and if that doesn't work, go to the superintendent, you know. So I think we have to be very careful as a school board. One thing that always kind of irked me sometimes in the past school boards is that they tried to micromanage things. Like you can get things done by going to the school board member. We should be macro managing.
Yep.
Not doing the day-to-day kind of things of trying to solve problems that are coming up.
And I think just a very, very real scenario is, as Gerald talked about earlier. This is a close-knit community and it's, you know, a lot of people. And I think board members have a lot of personal connections with just a lot of people. And, and I think that's one of the things when we started our, our orientation, just walking through, you know, having some canned statements about how you can listen but not respond. And I'll pass this information along, you know. And I, and again, I think that's where it's so important for me to, as a superintendent, to know what are the things that are out there so that I can be prepared to respond to those things and, and be able to know that, you know, if I'm hearing from two board members that they've had this question, well, then I probably need to put something out publicly in when, whether it's a work session or, you know, there's things that I can get communication out if it's warranted. But if it's a one-off piece of communication, well, you know, it's, so it's, I think that that's been a, I think we've, we've worked through, we've worked through that process here. And I think that I've seen, I've seen communication come to me from board members. So I trust that that's, that that's happening.
Happening, very good. It sounds, sounds like you have a very healthy response in how you're handling that. And I would agree with the emails to just simply forward them on to the superintendent. You can, if you want, respond and say, thank you so much, Gail, for contacting me. I am cc-ing our superintendent, Janelle Bullard, in this response. And she will follow up, just so they know that you've heard from them. And I love the chain of command that you talked about, too. You know, it might be something about, well, why don't you go back and talk to the, the coach? Or why don't you go back and talk to the teacher? Or, you know, moving up that, whatever that chain of responsibility or communication is for you to just be educating the community on that. And then tied to that with some of the things that have been said is statement sixty-six, too. Ensuring that the public is well-informed of board's roles and responsibilities. And I like the fact that you have some sort of canned statements. And I, I noticed that your responses are a little bit different here. You've got a never and a some of the time. But if you do have some of those scenarios created so that board members are prepared to respond based on whatever the, the question comment might be. I use the term having an elevator speech of, you know, just sharing what the board's role is. I'm one of six or one of seven. My power's at the board table and we are working at that high level, visionary level. However, the person who can really help you with this is going to be our superintendent. And I think when you are united in that, it's a well-oiled machine. And I love the fact, too, that you said, you know, you want to keep Janelle informed. The worst thing is for her to have surprises. And then the other thing is sometimes when you come to her, she might have been working on that or have known about it for months. And now it's maybe surfacing in a more public way. So I think what you're doing is very, very healthy.
Quite often when community members, community members have company or even students, what's the problem? I always let Janelle know what I heard or, you know, what they came forward with. But quite often, all I need to do is tell them that the board isn't responsible for that and where they can get help and what procedures they need to go to. And most of the time, that's all they want, is to know what they can do.
Right. Good point, good point. Great. And I think that the fact that you are providing that as part of your orientation with new board members, again, just want to say that, that that's a, a very healthy thing to do, to just set that, that tone right away. And if you have ever individually deviated from that or know of board members who have, you know how challenging that can be. Because sometimes you are like that, that easy contact. And you can just, you can get yourself in the middle of so many things that you really would wish you hadn't done so. As we move to the next set of questions, talking about communication. And that is part of your strategic plan. Communicating both internally and externally. And based on your responses, you don't think that there's any concerns with that other than just keep on doing what you're doing. The last two statements talk about gathering information. You talked earlier about a, a survey that you are going to have out in the community or have out already. But just remember that it's fine to seek out information in a variety of ways. Sometimes it becomes a very formal way that you're seeking that input. You might do the surveys, you might have groups coming together. Sometimes it might be unsolicited. And if someone talks to you and says, you know, I'd like to give you some feedback on whatever the topic might be, I think it's fine to listen and say, sure, you know, I'll, I'll listen. And really kind of just in the gathering information phase right now, but I'd love to hear what you have to say. And then statement seventy-one, take that information back to the board table where you carefully consider that and share it with fellow board members in the decision-making process. So as you move ahead with some bigger decisions, it might be working on the tech levy or other things, that might be your mantra for seeking and then carefully considering. Any comments on that?
I'd like to make another comment. As we've gone through this process so far, it commonly, I believe that we have a performing board here. Somewhere in the discussion, it came up about boards just being rubber stamped. It's a common thing that people will say in the public. But because we perform and because we have long periods of times we can discuss at a meeting and we have everything on the table, I believe we can perform yet not be a rubber stamp. And I would venture a guess that if you could pull Janelle aside and ask her if this rubber or just rubber stamps everything, she will tell you that's not the case. That you have to have everything. And I think from the public standpoint that are all listening to this, it's not that we're, we're working together, we're doing the best we can for the district, but it is not a rubber stamp thing.
Well, I think to follow up to that, it makes, you, you could get that picture because we have two meetings a, a week, a month. And the first is the work session, the second is a business session. The business sessions go pretty quickly.
Yep.
And the reason they go quickly is because we've already discussed things in the previous meeting. Now, if someone doesn't see us in the previous meeting, they might just look at the board meeting and say, oh, they didn't discuss that. But we have, we've gone over it. And that's what those work sessions do for us.
Right. Well, and one of the things you can do if you're not already doing that is with, you know, Rick as chair, when the decision comes before the board at the regular meeting, prior to taking the vote, you could comment and say, you know, we had a, a study session, a work session this month. Or maybe we've had three discussions and we've had individuals come in and experts have talked. And, and you just share that briefly and say, board members, are you ready to vote? And then you can proceed with the vote. So that might help, too, in how you communicate and so that the public doesn't get the idea that you're a rubber stamp. Any questions about any of the other statements? Anything you want to go back to?
I think the biggest issue that I think we face, looking at this, is we got to the end with communication, is trying to get the communication out to the community of what we're about and what's happening here. And that, that's the one thing I think we struggle with, well, a lot of issues we struggle with. But that's the one that just seems the hardest to come to, to grips with. So many things happening here and yet we can't seem to get the word out at times. Because either people don't want to hear it or they're not listening. So that's something I think we, I try to think of ways that we can do that. And especially, so we're not always just going out to the community when we need money either. And so it's, there are other ways and other times when we're, we're sharing what's happening.
Well, and that does tie back to your strategic plan where you've got communication. And maybe that is something that you'll want to take a little bit closer look at. If there are some other tools, tips that you can use with the communication. Sounds like maybe internal is going well, but the external can be, it can be a struggle. For it doesn't matter where you're at around the state and how much communication you do or, you know, what you put out there. But maybe that would be one of the things you could be having a discussion about and working on.
I mean, Janelle does a really good job with the newspaper. But I don't think a percent of people in our town get the newspaper anymore. It's probably way under fifty percent.
Well, and I think too, you know, you can ask, you can ask one population of people and they'll say, yeah, I get all my information from social media. I get a lot of information. And then you can have another group of people who say, well, I only read the press. And, and, but I didn't, I didn't see that article and, oh, I, I just didn't read that. You know, and again, it's kind of to that point of like, if there's an interest there, they'll read it. But if there's not, if there's not a level of interest there, it might just, they might just skim over. But I also think that, you know, I had somebody tell me today, actually, that they were in a couple of larger school districts and saw their, their like Innovation Center, which is again, the, the site that all of our name placards were made in. And, and it was a large, a large school district. And they said, we have that in Painesville. And, and the, the kind of, the quandary that comes with that is that I don't know that, I mean, we can share with people the amazing things.
Right.
Yet I think they know that we've got amazing things. They just don't know that it's so unique that we, as a small school district, have all these amazing things. I know they know that we've got really cool opportunities for kids, but I don't know that they recognize how unique it is that a district our size is providing the opportunities for the kids that we're providing. Because it's just what they have access to and it's what they know, right? And so I, and I, and I don't know how to get in front of it. I don't know how to add that little nugget of information that, you know, do you know how unique we are? And it's, you know, Bruce talks a lot about just being able to like toot our own horn, get out there and just have conversation and, and tell about the good things. But not but, and, and helping people to recognize that this is unique. And, but you don't want to like nay-say the neighbors and you don't want to like, you know, but it's, it is cool stuff that we've got going and, and it's just what our kids know. So I don't know, it's, it's kind of a unique problem. It's a nice problem to have.
Right.
But it's, how do we make sure that we continue to communicate what, what it is that we're doing that's really positive and, and that it is, it is unique?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's that, did you know? It's that telling the prudes, telling the positives and, and then how you do it. Is, is that something that as a team, you've ever considered putting some staff resources into? Where you'd have somebody that could really push that out? I'm, I'm just guessing that that's got to be a struggle too, Janelle. If you're taking the lead on it, would that be something to consider? I don't know.
Yeah.
I didn't even bring it up, but we're also busy. But I often thought that we should be going out in teams of two people to, to other groups within the community. The Lions, we don't have that many groups, but the Lions or to the, to the Legion when they have a meeting or, if there were opportunities. I know I should be in, and yet it's like, oh, that's something else. But and, and beating the bushes and telling people.
When we had our, that other referendum, you had scheduled some meetings. And unfortunately, you know, there's three sides to every, every story. The people, the people have to want to come to, to learn about it, too. So it's just, it's hard to pull people in. And unfortunately, sometimes small groups are going to develop. I don't want to say assuming or they think they know, but they don't know what's actually going on behind the scenes. And then, and that makes it really tough.
Well, you have to go to where the people are, not try to pull them in. And I would say, we have some opportunities here in sporting events where we could maybe do something, but I don't know what to do, but to, to advertise ourselves. In the middle of a basketball game or something to, you've got a thousand people here.
But those, the tough thing is those are oftentimes the people that are reading the information anyways. Or getting a bunch of, because it's their, their kids that are in school, you know, it's, it's a tough thing and it's not meeting those that, the frequent, the reader of, you know, or frequent copy of.
And I think to Ron's point is, you know, people, when we went to where people are and can be, I think they're, they think they know. And so why do I, I don't need to go to an informational session because I already know.
I already know. My neighbor told me.
Yeah.
What's your neighbor telling you?
But those are, those are just very real struggles. And, and I, and I know that, Gail, this isn't unique to us in Painesville. I know that. And, and I think we, if, you know, I have a lot of ideas, but I, it's not unique to us. It's just how to.
That's a stumbling point for us. And I think other schools have the same.
And I see, the reason why it's not unique to us is because, say, most every other district. Unless you have a huge marketing department and huge marketing dollars that you can spend to market to your public, it's a struggle because you also balance that I can't spend twenty-six thousand dollars a year in marketing to my, my general public. You know, where's that value? Because what do surveys cost to send out? You know, what is this, what's that mailer cost? What's this cost? Like, you can't do that six times a year. You know, it's once, well, once a year is not enough either. And so it's, how do you balance that? If people aren't reading the press and they're not on Facebook and they don't look at our website, where do they get information? It's their neighbor who said that and saw something and heard something or.
The coffee shop.
Something else that I, I think, I've been really proud of our, our secondary building especially. And our elementary does a really nice job connecting as well. But we have a really large, we have a, it's an assisted living facility and a nursing home facility that are just very, what? Our school is connected to those facilities and they're there to, our students go over and do the programs. Our school is connected to those facilities and they're there to, our students go over and do the programs for. The residents because they can't get out and they can't come to our space or. Excuse me, or our students, um, our, our student, our, um. Student council. That was the biggest move, our student council today was over and they were, they were at the, um, at the centers just having. Conversation with just, just being present with the, with the people who live there. And I think that that's such a powerful connection and it's, and it's not for anything. It's not for money, it's not because we need something, it's about trying to connect our community. And that's just something that our, our elementary staff and our secondary staff have just. Done because it's the right thing to do and so that's how do we, how do we continue to just build on those opportunities? So that if. And then maybe of the residents that are at the, um, at one of the assisted livings. When our student body is working there, they might be able to say. So what's this deal, what's this, what's this boat thing about? You know, it might, it might create opportunity, you know, but I don't know, so. Our, I, I think our buildings have done a nice job trying to connect with. Populations in our community that are not on Facebook, they're not reading the newspaper, they're not, you know, they're pretty isolated, they're not at the, the ballgames, they're not coming to the concerts. But they still care about kids in school, so.
Yeah, well, if that's a method. Um, no matter what communication you use. We're doing the surveys and they're getting it in the mail, they all go to post office, every single person has a post office. Number of years ago, I was at the conference and the school district found out. The size of the paper that's printed in, in like our press and those and they printed. Folded it in, up in a fashion that they had. Eight to twelve great big prints with a caption on all of them. Folded that whole thing up for the cost of one sheet. And mailed it to everybody. Everybody in the district got it. I don't recall anymore, um, how many times they did it. But. That's the part of it, when the public says to us, we always go to them and let them know everything when we need money. Well, they're right. That's the only time we're taking an effort to make sure we get to every single person is at that time and I think. At other times of the year or time of the year, even if it was once. And we took the picture of an innovation center and it says right up above, this is what's offered in the Painesville school districts, it's here at home, thanks to you. Boom, you got a picture of it, it's this big, they can look at it, pictures worth a thousand words. But when they did it by this full sheet, because the paper sheets. That they print are big, they folded it up in a fashion that when they got home and all folded out, flipped it over, all folded out. And they knew what was going on in that district.
And. They're, they're.
Good tool, yep.
Their ideas, their good ideas.
And I, I'm wondering too, when the students are going into the assisted living, is someone taking advantage of a photo opportunity to push that?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Okay, good.
Is that really good on the Facebook?
The admin assistant in my office, she does, uh, all of our communications, she's done a nice job, like she does all our social media. So our staff has really done a nice job too, reaching out to her when they have a really cool. Um, just learning opportunity and then so it's not always about a sporting event and it's not always about. Um, a program or a show, it's just, it's the day to day learning that's happening.
Very good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Great. Other questions or comments about any of the standards, any of the benchmarks?
I think we're doing a good job, yeah.
You are doing a good job, you know.
As a school board, I mean, we got issues, challenges.
Right.
Right now.
Yes.
But.
If we didn't have any challenges, we wouldn't be.
Yeah, we wouldn't be.
That's right, why would you be there, so, well, as you think about that in the discussion this evening, what are, what's a takeaway? Each of you want to come up with a takeaway? Something that, uh, you want to reflect upon or something to think about down the road?
My takeaway is for myself is improvement, when you give us a sheet. That has a comparison of twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. This has been a whole different conversation, it was a different conversation when we only had one. When all of a sudden, this could be three or four, um. I like to have an idea, have we improved, have we not? When I was talking about our superintendent working with, uh, workforce stuff that she has to send in. That's what she has. A lot of comparisons about where we were and where we're going to, I thought the report that you have here was excellent. When we have a comparison where we're at twenty twenty.
Absolutely, other takeaways?
I'd just say the same word improvement, I mean, to myself, it's not. It's not just seeing improvement that would be, it's not just, you know, the understanding that we can always improve, that, you know, if we had heavier conversations around communication with our, our public, we have, you know. There's, there's opportunities for us to continue to grow and I think that's, that's the big thing that, you know, it looks like, that looks like we are doing well, we're doing really well, but doesn't mean that, you know. That we can't continue to improve, you know, our communication within the, the eight of us, um, the communication as individual board members, Janelle. Um, you know, and, and, and the rest of the district and understanding what, what's going on, I, you know, they, yeah, six, six years, this is my sixth year on the board and. I'm still learning, you know, you're still growing and you're still trying to, you know, figure things out, so.
But, but I think it also helps, uh, from the, from the board side, uh, because we do evaluate Janelle, uh. As Thomas had mentioned, you know, twice a year, but I think on the board side, this helps us now just start setting goals. For ourselves. Uh, or as far as a team, uh, to, to move forward with. So, not only does, does Janelle then, you know, from us have goals, but then how do we align those goals? Uh, to, is it, that, that has to go both ways, we have to support her, she has to support us, so align those goals together, so.
You're a team, that's right, thank you, other takeaways from the group?
Learning process.
Yeah.
I think. Um, as a board, we're always going to have some controversy, that's why you've got seven members on it. Different walks of life and have different opinions on certain things. But I think this board is so functional because we can butt heads and, and go through that controversy. And come out still dealing with each other really well. We have the ability to move on because we respect each other.
Yeah.
And that, that respect is so palatable for me.
Respect the fact that we're all. Have our own perspective and doing this for the kids, doing this for the, the growth of our district and the children within the district and. And, and, you know. You can't not respect somebody's opinion for that. That plan.
That's part of it too, I think everyone's goal here is the kids. And nobody has a real agenda that they're set, that's set on, everybody's goal is to do the best we can for our kids.
Yeah.
Very good. Other perspectives?
I guess for me, I'm going to piggyback off Ron, just the continued learning. Of everything. And my perspective, I guess.
Okay.
Um, and I guess my, my takeaway is to, um, trust the process, you know, there's, there's a lot of process, uh, driven. Um, pieces in front of us, there's, you know, we have, I have a lot of tools. In my tool belt that I have access to and so being able to, um. To reach into those tools when I'm at a point in the process that is just. You know, I, I can, I can use the tools at different points of the process to. Make sure that, that the board has the information that they need so that they can make decisions and I feel like that's something that. Um, has been, it's been something I worked on from a goals, you know, you. In years past of, of making sure that my communication is clear and having. And it's, um, and if I trust the process that's kind of established, then, you know, I, I, I can just. Implement the tools that I have in my tool belt and, and hope, hopefully that, uh, I give enough information that board members can make the decisions.
Absolutely. Great, anything else from the group? Oh, well, as I promised earlier, I will create a summary for you of some of the things that we talked about and. Uh, at a, a subsequent meeting, you can take a look at them if there's some things that you'd like to implement. This year or even into the next year, feel free to do that, I just want to compliment you too on your sense of teamwork, I work with so many school boards and you are. Um, you're, you're walking, you're walking the talk here, uh, in. Looking at student achievement and being committed to, to public education and to wanting the best for your. Students and I love how you were able to talk and interact tonight, I don't always get to see that and so that's like a breath of fresh air. And I would just encourage you to, to maintain that and it's. And a pleasure to interact with you, remember that at School Boards Association, all of our colleagues are always available to you if. You need us and if we can support you in any way and, um, certainly just reach out. So with that, thank you, thank you again for the work that all of you do together as a team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail.
And I will sign off, have a good rest of your evening too.
All right.
Take care, yep, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.